Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on General Welfare. At this time, can everyone please silence your cell phones? If you wish to submit testimony, you may send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Zayanna Ayala, and I am the Deputy Speaker of the New York City Council and the Chair of the General Welfare Committee. I'd like to begin by thanking everyone for joining us here this morning. Today, our committee is holding an oversight hearing entitled "Timeliness of Public Benefits Processing at the Human Resources Administration." We will also hear three bills: Introduction 641, sponsored by Councilmember Williams; Introduction 703, sponsored by Councilmember Abreu; Introduction 704, also sponsored by Councilmember Abreu. I will let my colleagues speak about the details of their bills, all which seek to improve efficiency as it relates to administering public benefits. Over the last several weeks, it was brought to my attention that there are chronic delays at the Human Resource Administration. According to HRA, these delays are a result of unprecedented increase in applications and the end of the federal waivers that delayed many processes since the onset of the pandemic. It is undeniable that many of these delays are also the result of short staffing, which we are seeing is an issue across all city agencies. As of October 2022, HRA has had a 20.4% vacancy rate. Coupled with the fact that the city is seeing such high numbers of applications, the current situation is unsustainable and further marginalizes New Yorkers. It is resulting in even greater food insecurity for those who are unable to process their SNAP applications. It is also putting individuals and families at even greater risk of eviction while they await enrollment in cash assistance and receipts of a CityFEP's rental assistance voucher. Today, we are here to examine what the city is doing to ameliorate the current situation and strategize around solutions to ensure the New Yorkers have what they need to survive and thrive. This conversation literally is about putting food on the table. It is about ensuring that New Yorkers have the supports needed to prevent them from entering into shelter. We must do better. I want to thank the administration, the advocates, legal service providers, volunteers, and any individuals with lived experience who have taken the time to join us. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here today: Councilmembers Abreu, Williams, Caban, Lee, Hudson, De La Rosa, Anne, Riley, Jose, and Stevens, who's on Zoom. Finally, I would like to thank the committee staff who worked to prepare this hearing: Amenta Kilowant, Senior Counsel; David Homero, Counsel; Chrissy Dwyer, Senior Legislative Policy Analyst; Julia Harramis, Principal Finance Analyst; Rose Martinez, Assistant Deputy Director; Nicholas Montalbano, Senior Data Scientist; and my staff, Elsie Encarnacion, Chief of Staff. I will now turn it over to some of the sponsors of the bills that we're hearing today to give brief remarks. Councilmember Abreu.
Good morning, and thank you to Chair Ayala for allowing me to speak on these two bills that will be heard today. Intro 703 would require quarterly reports on whether rental assistance payments are being sent on time. Unfortunately, we have seen and heard instances where late payments caused hardships for tenants and prospective tenants, and in the worst cases, keep families in shelter longer than needed. By requiring a report on the reasons for late payments, we are sending a message to voucher recipients that we are serious about combating source-of-income discrimination and doing whatever we can to ensure that the city's side of the street is clear, that monthly payments are paid in full and on time, without clerical errors or other delays muddying up the process. Intro 704 will further ease these efforts by allowing for electronic payments to landlords. It's 2022, and we don't have electronic payments allowed. Currently, landlords are paid by check. However, we've seen that many landlords are increasingly incentivizing electronic payment, and many tenants prefer to ease of access as well. By allowing electronic disbursement of these funds, we are furthering our efforts to ensure timely payment, ensuring landlords that despite what they may think, voucher recipients are a good tenant as any other. I've been in housing court as a tenant lawyer, and I can't tell you the number of cases of non-payment proceedings I've received. People are in housing court because of the failure of providing timely payments by government, and then cases end up getting addressed or negotiated, resolved, once that payment is made. We shouldn't have that strain on right-to-council lawyers in the first place. And the idea that we should preclude this legislation is laughable. We've got a strong case for why these bills should be passed expeditiously, put simply, ease of payment, a smoother process for receiving funds, and the benefits of participating in these city-funded programs are the essential tools in our toolbox for combating source-of-income discrimination. Coupled with enforcement, which we hope to secure even more budget wins for this year, we have a real opportunity to make changes here. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing the administration.
Thank you, Councilmember. We will now hear from Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. I'm proud to have introduced Intro 641, a bill that would require all job centers and SNAP centers to have an expediter on-site at all times in which clients are being served or waiting to be served. This bill would also implement a queue management system at every job center and SNAP center. Such a system shall allow clients to check in for each particular service. The system will inform clients how many clients are ahead of them in the queue and the approximate time that they may expect to be called to begin an appointment for each service. As someone who has worked really hard to ensure that our city's policies and practices are fair, just, and equitable for all people, I know that this is important for us to be able to evaluate these facility practices at regular intervals so that we can ensure they are operating in line with best practices. My office has received several negative feedback statements about their HRA office experiences, and our goal with this bill is to help mitigate and rectify these complaints. When my office has tried to call the DSS office to ask questions regarding the HEAP application, my team was unable to get ahold of anyone, and when we were finally able to get a live individual, the call was dropped. A constituent of mine who was just certifying her benefits ended up missing payments for multiple months, and it took our office at least a month and a half to get her benefits reinstated after being unable to get in contact with the representative. Another one of our constituents contacted our office to ask for assistance in submitting the documentation needed for the CityFEP's voucher program back in September. She lives in a shelter with her children, and due to an error, the constituent lost her voucher status and is currently unable to look for housing. She is still in the shelter with her family, and we are still waiting for updates regarding the case. It has been open and pending since September. At the Jamaica SNAP Center, constituents complain about the treatment, such as long wait times, unclear directions as to what needs to be done for their case, and staff who are not sensitive to their situations. Intro 641, along with other bills being heard today, are important steps towards ensuring that all people receive the services they need in a timely manner, which is critical to helping them reach their full potential. This is a necessary step to ensuring that all people have access to the services they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I will now turn it over to Senior Counsel Amenta Kilowant to administer the oath to witnesses from the administration.
Would you all please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning. I want to thank the City Council's Committee on General Welfare and Deputy Speaker Ayala for organizing today's hearing on access to public benefits. We look forward to updating the committee on our work to connect New Yorkers in need to our public assistance programs. My name is Jill Berry. I'm the First Deputy Commissioner at the New York City Department of Social Services. I'm joined today by my colleagues Lisa Fitzpatrick, Administrator of the New York City Human Resources Administration, and Ramon Flores, Assistant Deputy Commissioner at HRA. The New York City Department of Social Services Human Resources Administration is the nation's largest social services agency. Each year, we assist more than 3 million New Yorkers through the administration of over 14 public assistance programs and services. Every day, in all five boroughs, HRA provides essential programs and services to low-income New Yorkers. In administering these programs, HRA is at the forefront of this administration's efforts to combat poverty and address homelessness. We appreciate the opportunity to brief you and the public on the work that DSS HRA performs day in and day out to help vulnerable New Yorkers access critical social services. We are living in unprecedented times as we recover from a global pandemic that placed immense stress on all New Yorkers, particularly those with the least resources. Moreover, as we have reported before, COVID-19 challenged our agency like never before as we quickly pivoted to alleviate the burden of insecurity for so many New Yorkers. While the nation continues to recover from the pandemic, we must keep in mind that not all communities are recovering evenly, and that's the case in New York City. With a national unemployment rate of 3.5% as of September 2022, New York City has been slower to recover from the COVID-19 pandemic with a current local unemployment rate of 5.6%. This while we consider that the nation had a pre-pandemic unemployment rate of 3.5 as compared to New York City's 3.7%. There are many factors leading to these disparities, and we are currently facing the challenges that come with a city that continues to recover from the repercussions of an unprecedented pandemic. Given the extraordinary landscape, we have been seeing an equally extraordinary demand for public benefits from New Yorkers across the five boroughs. Looking at the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, the volume of applications received by HRA during the pandemic reflects the heightened need for food security. During the height of the pandemic in April 2020, the agency received 84,000 SNAP applications in that month alone, the highest number of SNAP applications in modern history, reflecting a more than 200% increase compared to the 27,000 applications received in April 2019. Moreover, from March 2020 through June 2020, the period in which DSS HRA experienced the greatest surge in SNAP applications, the agency received 121,000 more SNAP applications than in the same period in 2019, a 113% increase. The trends for cash assistance were just as unprecedented. In March 2020, DSS HRA received approximately 12,745 more cash assistance applications than in March 2019, a 53% increase. Overall, between February 2020 and November 2020, there was an approximate 53,000-person or 16% increase in the cash assistance recipient caseload and a more than 30,000-case increase or nearly 17%. It has long been the vision of this agency to break down barriers to benefits access. And pursuant to that vision, we have worked to modernize our service delivery model with our internet-based platform and mobile app, Access HRA, where New Yorkers can apply online for the public benefits they need to support themselves and their families. Strategies such as this one not only allow us to expand our reach to more New Yorkers seeking our services, but they also allow us to focus attention to those seeking in-person services at our many centers located across the city. We believe the increase in benefit applications demonstrates that benefits access is working. Our response to the pandemic was proportional to its gravity. DSS HRA took swift steps to ensure program continuity during and throughout the pandemic. These program reforms and pivots were meant to ensure that no vulnerable New Yorker was turned away from the public benefits they needed to get through the health emergency and economic downturn. For example, it has also been a longstanding goal to improve client access by transitioning from using only in-person interviews as part of the cash assistance application requirement and shift to allow for these interviews to occur by telephone at the client's choice, just as we're permitted to offer for SNAP, clients pursuant to federal and state waivers that we previously received. At the start of the pandemic, DSS HRA was granted a state waiver with support from hundreds of reassigned staff members. The agency was able to promptly set up a system for New Yorkers to apply for cash assistance online and conduct their interview by phone. This was possible by following the effective blueprint developed in pioneering remote access for SNAP via Access HRA, showing that our efforts to modernize benefit access over time put us in good stead as the pandemic arrived. What's more, following our persistent advocacy, a recent state law has made this remote cash assistance option permanent, meaning that clients can conduct all business online and by telephone, making it more convenient for New Yorkers to access the services they are entitled to. Fast forwarding to today, while New York City continues to recover, we are continuing to see immense demand for DSS HRA services nearly three years since the pandemic began, and that is highlighted by the record-breaking applications and caseloads we are still seeing today. The average number of individuals that received cash assistance and SNAP each month has been at its highest in the last five years. The fact is that we have seen an unprecedented increase in the average number of applications, which, to stress once more, is also the highest in the last five years, and we are using every tool at our disposal to ensure that we are processing applications as quickly as possible. This increase reflects the reality of the need on the ground as we continue to recover from the economic impact of the pandemic coupled with the expiration of the state's eviction moratorium and pandemic-related federal supports. Consequently, the timeliness rates of services in FY22 were impacted by the expiration of key waivers active during FY20 and FY21. Our application volumes have persisted at an unprecedented rate. In October 2022, we received over 50,000 SNAP applications, which was an increase of 60% compared to October 2019 and the highest monthly application number since May 2020. We received over 41,000 cash assistance applications in October 2022, a 51% increase over the number we received in October 2019. Despite the unprecedented increase in applications and related challenges, our teams processed more applications and connected more New Yorkers to benefits than in recent years. We are squarely focused on addressing the need on the ground and ensuring that we are serving every New Yorker in need. To do so, we continue to hire staff to fill our vacancies while also finding ways to better optimize our existing resources across the agency. We are also working closely with our state partners to request further waivers and easements that will assist in our ability to process cases more quickly. We continue to further streamline processes related to our remote platforms such as Access HRA and phone interviews for recertifications to do everything we can to minimize delays. Unprecedented need has outpaced our resources, and we are using every tool and strategy at our disposal, from seeking program waivers to implementing technological solutions, reassigning, and hiring staff to meet the demand. It is worth noting here that DSS HRA staff were able to help get an unprecedented level of resources to New Yorkers throughout this economic and health emergency. Over $5 billion in SNAP benefits were distributed to New York City residents in 2021, nearly 50% more than the year before, and we are on pace for similar levels this year due to pandemic relief. Before I discuss the legislation under consideration, I want to take a moment to highlight the incredible work of DSS HRA staff over the past three years. In the face of a global health pandemic, DSS HRA staff worked tirelessly to process benefits applications to ensure their fellow New Yorkers received essential benefits and supports. Their work continues to this day to support New Yorkers impacted by the current economic realities, and I want to thank each and every one of them for their dedication to vulnerable New Yorkers in need. Moving to legislation, we are reviewing the ideas proposed within the bills on the agenda, and we look forward to learning more about their intent. Introduction 641 intends to maximize the efficiency at DSS HRA centers by proposing several staffing and management systems. We are currently reviewing this legislation and its impacts. Based on preliminary review, the bill doesn't reflect the on-the-ground operations and needs of our centers, which raises concerns. As we discuss these proposals, we want to highlight the work and reforms that DSS HRA has taken to improve the client experience. Following the passage of Local Law 169 of 2019, we worked closely with the council to conduct a comprehensive audit focusing on operations and procedures at DSS HRA benefits access centers and SNAP centers with the goal of identifying efficiencies and improving the client experience at these centers. This audit, published in March of 2020, highlighted the many reforms DSS HRA has put into place to improve center operations and how we have advanced our no-wrong-door service delivery approach. DSS HRA continues this work by implementing an aggressive plan to modernize the way our program and services are accessed. With the launch of Access HRA, we have created dozens of case-specific points of information online in real time for our clients, which expands access, increases flexibility, and opens resources at our centers for those resources who are most in need of individualized, person-to-person attention. Our efforts to improve service delivery have also extended to our cash assistance program. Earlier this year, as previously mentioned, we worked with the state legislature to make permanent our COVID-19 waiver, allowing clients the option to have telephone interviews to apply and recertify for cash assistance without the need to go into one of our centers. This change now provides cash assistance clients with the same option that SNAP clients have had through our on-demand telephone interview system since 2016, giving them the option to apply and recertify for benefits without the need to travel to a center. Overall, these ongoing efforts have enhanced the client experience, and we look forward to working with the council and bill sponsor to build upon this progress. Introduction 703 proposes reporting regarding when rental assistance payments are made to landlords on behalf of tenants. While the bill seeks to track the timeliness of rental assistance payments, it doesn't seem to recognize the workflow, the nuances behind payment delivery at its various stages, and the reasons for potential delays. We look forward to discussing this proposal further with the bill sponsor. We are also eager for the continued rollout of our new landlord management system, CURRENT, which is under development and will include a landlord portal that will allow all New York City landlords to opt into electronic funds transfer and to see a record of payments processed. Moreover, as our agencies have voiced before, we have concerns about the administrative burden this reporting bill would introduce given the resource-intensive demands behind collecting this information. We would like to focus our resources on improving the process for clients and landlords rather than engaging in an exercise that will not in and of itself make changes to those processes. Introduction 704 proposes changes in relation to the streamlining of rental assistance payments. We look forward to discussing this proposal with its sponsor as well as we believe that our ongoing efforts to streamline rental payments for landlords, including full implementation of CURRENT, will achieve the goals that we all share and may preclude the need for this legislation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on our work to connect New Yorkers in need to public assistance benefits. We look forward to our continued collaboration and any questions you may have here today.
Thank you. So I think today's hearing was really... The need for today's hearing was made very clear as our office started to receive a number of calls of concerns that were raised by colleagues. Specifically, it started in the Bronx. The Bronx colleagues were calling quite frequently with concerns that applications were not being processed, that they couldn't get... even their staff couldn't get through to staff at HRA. And so it seemed at first like, you know, maybe because of the staffing shortfalls, that may be contributing to some of the delays. But then it became obvious that this was a bigger problem than even, you know, we had initially, you know, thought it was. So when did HRA... and I get that during the pandemic, the number of applications increased significantly, and that the state and the federal government did issue waivers to, I guess, you know, allow discretion regarding recertifications and to push those further down the line. But since then, at what point did HRA realize that we were in trouble and that application, you know, completion rates had dropped below a threshold that was alarming?
Is your mic on? I'm sorry.
Despite the incredible work of our frontline staff, the unprecedented increase in application volume from the start of the pandemic and continuing through today has... we haven't been able to get to everything, and we don't take this lightly, right? The impact on New Yorkers who are in need of our benefits, we take this very seriously. We're working tirelessly to make sure that we're getting to every single application. We're working on them on a first-in, first-out basis, prioritizing emergencies where we can. But we recognize that there is a backlog that we are working to address.
I mean, for me, it's really concerning because this is a safety net, right, system? And it's intended to be there in times of crisis. And so, you know, now you're not getting unemployment benefits, but you're also not receiving your food stamp allotment, and you're not getting cash assistance. I mean, we have cases where people's rents haven't been paid through the CityFEP's program for upwards of a year. That's problematic. So I understand that HRA and that the commissioner solicited help from the state and the federal government. At what point was that help sought out? When did you reach... when did HRA realize, okay, now we need further aid here?
We've been working closely with our state partners throughout the pandemic. We recently re-engaged them last month to ask for some additional assistance, and we've been working really closely with them to try to figure out what can they do? What federal waivers are still permitted and available for the state and the city? And we're working closely with them to implement as much as possible. In November and December, we were able to push out some more recerts, which is allowing us to refocus our efforts on applications, and that's been a big help.
Can you explain what the benefit of the waivers would be to... I mean, I imagine that to the staff is, you know, it's pretty significant, right? Because if they don't have to worry about a recertification, and we're pushing that recertification back six months a year, that allows them time to focus on other applications. But how does that impact the recipient? Are they then receiving the same level of resources? What happens if there's a change in the income? Assuming, you know, I'm receiving SNAP benefits, my recertification hasn't happened, I become employed part-time during that time, and now by the time that HRA... am I then penalized? If, you know, HRA is looking retroactively at the past year? Like, what is the benefit to the recipient here?
So SNAP and cash assistance...
So, SNAP and cash assistance recipients have an obligation to report changes of income to us, even when recerts happen on their regular schedule within a certain timeframe, so that we can take another look at their case, rebudget their case. Cash and SNAP recipients are able to do that today. They can do that easily through Access HRA. They can come into one of our centers. Never should they have waited for a resort or need to wait for a resort in order to make those types of changes, and we do take actions on them. I don't know if you want to add anything else, Lisa?
Yes. Hi, good morning. First Deputy Commissioner Barry is absolutely correct. When it comes to cash assistance, if a household becomes employed, then if there are children on the case, then we have something that's called transitional SNAP benefits, and they can still receive that same higher level of SNAP for up to five months after they report that change. So, throughout this time, if anybody wanted to report a change like additional income or a change in household composition, then they were free to do that, even outside of the recertification period. Deferring the recertification gives those households an opportunity to maintain benefits, and we've had the same thing happen with the Medicaid program, where throughout this public health emergency, Medicaid recipients did not have to, they were not required to recertify, and that helped to keep people connected with much-needed health insurance benefits at a time when we were dealing with the COVID-19 crisis. Advancing these cases gives the same effect. It gives people an opportunity to stabilize their assistance while the agency has, you know, frees up resources in order to focus on the application cases. And from the start of the pandemic to now, many people, you know, feel that COVID-19, the pandemic's over, but it's not over for HRA, right? We've had an increased number of applications consistently throughout these almost three years at this point. It started, we hit the peak in April of 2020 for SNAP applications, 94,000. You know, there is no way we could have staffed up to have 94,000 applications processed. It was something that was alarming to all of us. We were really happy, I think we were victims of our own success, because we were really happy that the public had an opportunity to access benefits without coming into the locations. Many years ago, there used to be lines around the corner, around people trying to access HRA services, but because we now have Access HRA, you don't see that swell in the locations. But the work is still there. The work exists on the back end, and that's what we're struggling to process at this point because of the long and hard times that we've been dealing with this work for almost three years. 94,000 in April of 2020 for SNAP, SNAP applications for cash assistance, it was equally high, 36,874 applications in April of 2020 for the cash assistance program, and that wasn't even our high watermark for cash assistance. It continued, it continued to grow over months and months. In September of 2021, we had 37,000 cash assistance applications. In September, just this past September of 2022, we had 42,000 cash assistance applications. So, for some people, they think that, you know, the pandemic's over, HRA should be able to right-size the program and get back on track, but it's very difficult to plan for this. We have staffing, we're continuing to hire. We also still have redeployed workers who are helping us with the interviews, but they can't help us on the back end with processing. When it comes to processing, we have to have certified HRA employees who are trained in eligibility complete those transactions.
So, when we're hiring staff, how long does it take from the time that a person is hired and trained before they actually get to the part of the process where they're processing these applications?
The training process is six weeks.
Is six weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Had there been any, any changes to that as of late, considering the fact that we are so understaffed?
First of all, the training process changes and evolves constantly over time as rules change, right? This is a complicated process, constantly having tweaks and improvements to the program and the rules, so the training is constantly evolving. Training at one point used to take like 12 to 16 weeks even in some cases. We've been able to streamline it down to the six weeks minimum. Anything less than that doesn't train the staff well enough to do the right work, to really make sure that they are making sure that every application who is eligible is getting their benefits.
Do we know what the number of unprocessed applications is to date?
So, the backlog numbers change every single day, every single day as we complete application work and new applications are coming in the door. We can get back to you with the numbers as of today after the hearing, but they're changing by the day.
Do we have an idea of how long it takes, what the longest amount of time between an application being, a client, a client applying for benefits and the application being processed, is what is the longest amount of time a person has had to wait?
So, typical application processing timelines are 30 days. For most applications, we should be getting them done within 30 days, a lot sooner, obviously, if there's an emergency, and we're not, those are the timelines that we're not meeting, but the delays are in weeks after that, not months.
Weeks after the 30-day, okay.
We can get back to you with more.
And for emergency, emergency, like food services, how, what's the wait time for those processing applications?
It should be either for cash assistance, I believe it's same day, and SNAP within seven days.
Cash assistance is the same day?
Same day if there's an immediate need, and for SNAP, we have seven days for an expedited food stamps.
Okay, okay. So, regarding the phone interviews, is there any way, has HRA, you mentioned that you're streamlining that process. Can you share a little bit more about that and why? I've always had this question, you know, this concern. I'm like, it doesn't make any sense that I have to sit at home and wait. If I have an appointment for 11 o'clock in the morning to speak to an HRA representative about my application, why, you know, and I miss that call, right? Like, we've heard repeatedly for years, I mean, even before I was, you know, sitting on this committee, about, you know, missed appointments. Why hasn't there ever been an option that the person, that the client can actually call in at 11 o'clock and have a number that they can call directly?
Yeah, completely agree with you, Deputy Speaker. On the SNAP side, we do have on-demand interviews. We recognize that clients waiting for us to call them, the process doesn't work efficiently. It just, it just doesn't. And the on-demand, where the clients can call us, is a process that works much better. We're actively working to implement an on-demand system for the cash assistance population, just like we have for SNAP. We just got these state law change, the waivers, all that, just over the past couple of years. So, once we got those approvals, now we have to start the work to develop.
I understand the need for the waivers. My concern is that we're kicking the can down the line, and we're not necessarily addressing the root cause, right? Like, I mean, the staffing issue is a problem, and, you know, to the knowful of your own, but it's problematic. Do we know what the number, so we know that the application rate has gone up, what is the number of staff currently assigned to process applications, and what is the, what is the caseload per staff?
We'll have to get back to you on those specific numbers.
Okay. And how many staff is it going to take to eliminate the backlog? If you could get back to us on that as well. So, I mean, we hear things sometimes at the council, and one of the things that was brought to my attention, I don't know if it's true or not, was that during the height of the pandemic, when HRA was working remotely, that the application processing rate was significantly higher than they've been since staff has been required to work at the brick-and-mortar sites. Have, can you confirm or deny that that is an accurate statement of what's happened?
I think the difference is that we had a lot of waivers in place during the pandemic while people were working from home that we just don't have in place today, right? We didn't have to conduct interviews for SNAP applications, for example, during the pandemic. Now we do, we have to do those things, and I think that's the real key difference. It's not the working from home, working remotely versus working in the office. All of that coincided with the expiration of some really key waivers that allowed us to not have to do some work in the past that we now have to do.
When did the waivers expire again?
So, what First Deputy Commissioner Barry is referring to is the waiver of the recertification interview. From March of 2020 through September of 2020, we had an opportunity to focus exclusively on the application cases because the recerts were moved up six months. So, by advancing, having a waiver that allowed us to advance those recerts gave us breathing room, and we had all of our staff resources focused on the application activity.
And what is the rate of completion to date of applications? What is the rate now?
The application timeliness rates, is that what you're asking about?
Yeah.
So, for cash assistance, right now, it's 61.4% are getting done on time, and for SNAP, 46.3% are getting done on time. But we are reviewing every application that comes in. No application is left behind, and we're ensuring that as we get to each application, that clients receive the, all the benefits that they're entitled to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that you guys are as concerned as we are, and I, you know, just learned about this whole new scandal with the fishing of the food stamp, you know, benefits as well, and that is pretty alarming because there is no reimbursement-based program to compensate those families, and I don't, I don't even, I don't, I can't imagine how they're getting by. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop asking questions because I want to give my colleagues an opportunity, but we have Councilmember Altia Stevens who's on Zoom, and unless we have quorum, she will not be allowed to ask questions, so we're gonna start with Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I have a number of questions, but also starting with, my office is directly next door to an HRA office, and people are constantly sent to the office to fill out their applications and not being helped. Like, literally, my deputy had to walk someone over yesterday to the office because they were being refused help and service. So, you know, this is something that my office is dealing with consistently and constantly, and it's really unacceptable. So, one of my first questions is really around, like, I know we're talking about, like, staffing and recruitment. Can you guys talk to me a little bit about what the hiring and recruitment process for new staff is? Because I know it takes six weeks, but what does it look like ongoing to continue to retain and recruit staff? What is that process?
Yes, so, thank you for that. HRA, just like the, our CBO partners, we're all facing the same workforce challenges as employers around the country. We continue on a continual basis to recruit and to fill our vacancies and to train.
But what does that look like? I know that you're looking, do you have a process, is there a plan? Like, is there like a detailed mapped-out situation? Because one of the things in the city, I'm seeing more and more, that workforce development is not something that we are prioritizing, and it needs to happen. So, do you guys have like a recruitment plan and a strategy that you have in place currently?
We're advertising all of our positions on LinkedIn. We get plenty of resumes, and we're able to recruit regularly new staff. It's just an ongoing effort of going through the recruitment, going through the onboarding process, getting a start date, getting a class together, and, and having them start into training. It's part of our everyday, regular process. It happens every single day. It's not like we're just doing a set amount each and every day, and definitely OMB's lifting of the two-for-one hiring is gonna help us and allow us to move a little bit faster in that regard.
Okay. Has there been any analysis of total cost and impact of missed or delayed benefit payments, including like delays in SNAP, City FEPs, apartment loss, and stuff like that? Have you guys done an analysis of that?
I'm not sure I quite understood the question, an analysis of what the impact of the delays are?
Yeah, like, yeah, has been the impact of like the delays and loss that folks have been receiving because of the delays.
We know every individual is impacted when we're delayed. It's an impact to that family. That family is not getting the benefit that they're eligible for on the day that they're eligible for it. It's taking us extra time. With all due respect, an analysis is just gonna show what we already know. Even one family that we're laid on is one family too many for us. Yes.
Yeah, but the numbers actually help so that you can like start it. So, I think that, you know, just to be like, oh, we know, we know the impact, right? But I think having numbers and data is always helpful.
Yeah, I just want to add to that statement. Although cases are processed late because of the backlogs, there are times when we are intentionally holding a decision in order to help the household. Many times, individuals are coming to us, and they don't necessarily have all of the information that they need in order to process the case. So, what we've done, instead of rushing to deny cases, as we could do based on the state regulation, we've given people an extra opportunity, more time to be able to submit documentation, particularly when it comes to rent arrears. Some landlords are hesitant to give clients rent breakdowns. I'm not sure if that's a strategy to try to evict them. So, it takes sometimes households a much longer period in order to get the information that they need from HRA, for HRA to process the case. So, we do as much as possible to help those individuals. And if a case is processed untimely, we still go retroactive to the date of compliance. So, just because it's processed untimely, doesn't mean that someone misses out on a benefit. We're still obligated to issue food stamps or SNAP benefits retroactive to the date of application if they're found eligible, and for cash assistance, we issue benefits retroactive to the date of compliance if we have done something to cause a delay in the benefits. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear, that yes, there is untimely processing. Not all of it is necessarily a negative thing, and then even in the instance when we've done something to cause a delay, we do, we're obligated to issue the retroactive assistance.
Time expired.
Yeah, and I know that that is important, and I just want to also just say that having a number and data also can tell you where you're doing well at and look at the deficiencies and see where you're, you know, and even those stories, right? So, data doesn't always necessarily mean negative, a negative thing. I think that it would help with the process, and also you can see where you're doing well, where you're not doing well. I mean, in the same way that you were able to say that, like, 61% of the folks are getting cash assistance and 43% of the folks are for food stamps, right? We know that those are numbers that we need to improve and how much you need to improve on, and so, I think that it's important that there is some type of analyst, data and analyst around how this is actually impacting everyday families on a regular basis, because we know, like, they're gonna be impacted from that individual family, but having the data would actually be helpful for us to move the needle.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, but I'll come back later if I can.
All right. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you. I also had questions about staffing. I know there's a lot of retention, so actually, I'll focus my questions around the OMB vacancy mandate and the letter from OMB. Is HRA eligible for any special exclusions under this mandate?
HRA has to comply with the mandate, just like all other city agencies, but we will still have vacancies available even after the vacancy reduction is in place, and we'll work very closely, we already are working closely with OMB, to ensure that it doesn't interrupt, that this vacancy reduction doesn't interrupt any delivery of service to New Yorkers.
Okay. You know, there's a lot of different agencies that currently have a lot of vacancies and then also subject to the pegs, so I don't know if it's a good practice of the administration to sort of require agencies to further reduce when they already have such significant resource deficiencies. Like you said it best, the unprecedented. Like you said it best, the unprecedented need doesn't meet the resources that you have. And if you're now subject to decreasing your resources, how will that help your agency be more efficient in your work?
Thank you for that. We do have vacancies though still today. We will continue to have vacancies even after the reduction. And we've been working closely with OMB throughout the pandemic to continue to hire into these particular frontline positions. The issue is really the workforce shortage and finding qualified people who want to do this work has been a huge challenge, not just for us, but for employers across the country.
Yeah, I think, and you kind of had a spirited back and forth with Councilmember Stevens about finding people to work. But I guess what I'm saying is, as you try to find people to work, which is a problem, and I understand the issue, you're sort of in rock and a hard place administratively, if you're also then asked to reduce the resources that you're saying you already don't have the resources, I just don't see how that's going to be an efficient practice.
So there have been no cuts to the staffing that does processing for cash assistance and SNAP? So these are critical HRE services. And we've been fully funded for those services. Throughout the pandemic, we have been recruiting new hires to do this work. We've had OMB approval in order to hire people, but it really has boiled down to getting qualified candidates to do the job. We're advertising, Councilmember Stevens asked about, you know, the strategies to recruit and onboard staff. We are posting our positions everywhere. If you go on Access HRA, anybody who's going on Access HRA to apply or recertify, they will see our announcements. We've had job fairs, we're doing as much as we can in order to find qualified candidates. My colleagues here, Assistant Deputy Commissioner Ramon Flores, he's over the cash program. I have Assistant Deputy Commissioner Gregorio Morales, he's over the SNAP program. They have been going through resumes after resumes after resumes. And we are continuously interviewing and onboarding people.
That's why I didn't want to focus my questions on your recruitment process for new hires. I'm just talking about the overall machinations of your agency and the fact that you are being asked to reduce, for not, for your essential services. Okay, great. So I'll turn my questions over to the EBT car scams. There's been quite a few people that have called my office about the scams and they haven't been receiving proper information. It's of course been reported in the media. Can you tell us how HRA is proactively informing clients about the risk of benefit theft and steps to go through if they are a victim of benefit theft? I can tell you again from our office, some of your clients have not received information. It's been a very frustrating process for them.
So we've done things like, we have a social media campaign, we posted on Access HRA, we have flyers available in our centers. But quite frankly, it's unconscionable that anybody would steal anything from anyone, let alone these really critical benefits from our clients. We're working really closely with law enforcement at the city and national level to identify perpetrators, to try to stop this from happening because we know right now, under current federal and state law, that we can't return.
What is the protocol that you have when a client notifies you that they're a victim of benefit theft?
We take their information. We do a little bit of research to determine whether they were in fact a victim of skimming, and in almost every case, they are. We identify how much was lost. And we take the information that we get in order to work with our law enforcement partners to try to identify and stop the perpetrators.
So is the client reimbursed?
Unfortunately, federal and state law currently do not allow reimbursement of any of these benefits.
So are you working with the state, O TDA, around that?
We're working very closely. The state is just as concerned as we are.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. We'll now hear from Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you so much, Chair Ayala, for this important hearing. I had some follow-up questions around the same line of questioning that my colleagues have already asked. I am concerned about the 20% vacancy rate that is existing in the agency right now. We do have a breakdown here that the committee provided on essential services. And it does look like, from the information we have here, for example, domestic violence services has a 49% vacancy rate, according to the information we have here. The food assistance program seems like there are some vacancies there. Home energy assistance has 38.5%. Medicare and home care, 30.6%. The Office of Child Support Enforcement, 45%. So I want to understand, because what I'm hearing from you all is that the essential services are not gonna be impacted by basically continuing to keep positions vacant. But there are existing vacancies in the critical functions of the agency. So how do we reconcile keeping those positions vacant because based on the peg, you are not going to be allowed to fill some of those positions with delivering the critical services? Like, walk us through what that looks like in the event that there is some confusion in the way that I'm understanding this information?
Thank you for that. We're not, none of those vacancies are being held as vacancies. We're seeking to fill every vacancy that we have. And OMB has been a really great partner with us.
So in the peg plan, is there, there is going to be vacancies that will have to remain vacant in order for you to comply with the reduction plan, correct?
Right. I understand the question, but right now we have over 2,000 vacancies in DSS HRA. And even after the 50% reduction, we will still have nearly 1,000 vacancies left to fill. So it's not stopping us from filling our vacancies right now.
So in the 1,000 left to fill, do you foresee that those, that will be filled, will be filled in these critical areas that are now the most impacted by vacancies? Like domestic violence services, food stamp assistance program, home energy assistance, child support enforcement?
Yeah, absolutely. Core frontline critical services are our priority and OMB's priority. And OMB is committed to working with us to make sure that those programs and those services are not impacted. As Administrator Fitzpatrick said before, we have not yet cut any of those programs.
Okay. And has the agency as a whole created a plan for hiring? I know that you mentioned LinkedIn, I know that you mentioned the receipt of resumes and going out and doing different job recruitment programs. Is there an overall plan right now in place to fill those, I'll say the 1,000 vacancies that you're looking to fill?
It's part of our everyday work. There's, if you're asking for, is there one plan? I think Councilmember Stevens maybe was asking for the same thing. It's just part of our ongoing everyday activities that we're meeting about and talking about constantly, making sure that we have a good inflow of resumes to review, that we are reviewing those resumes and onboarding people and bringing them into training classes.
Do you understand that it's hard to reconcile in our minds that with the current backlog as it exists for applications that are coming in, that you all are already underwater on, that the agency would also be tasked and required to simultaneously fill these vacancies? It's hard to reconcile how that happens if the agency is already so behind on the day-to-day work of processing applications. Like, in my mind, it doesn't feel like the agency has the capacity at this moment in the way that it is staffed to be able to fulfill that mandate. So I want to understand, like, how that works within the processes that exist in the agency?
Yep. So staffing isn't the only tool at our disposal here. We're also working closely with the state to try to get more waivers and easements to allow us to do, to focus on the work that we need to. And we're working within our own agency to look at our processes, our systems. What else can we do to make that work go a little bit faster and be a little bit easier for our clients? We're not just relying on hiring. It's a comprehensive.
Okay. One other question on documents. So I understood what you said about delaying decisions in order to make sure that clients have the documents that are needed. One of the things that we're hearing, and I know I must not be the only one hearing this from our constituent services teams, is that oftentimes constituents will upload documents, they will submit documents, and then they receive a letter saying, "We didn't get your documents." So I want to understand sort of how that process is reconciled and what can be done? How can the council support in ensuring that when documents are uploaded or submitted, it's a more streamlined process? Because for a constituent who's walking into our office, right? That's already not receiving their cash assistance, that's already not receiving their food stamps to find their way all the way to their council member's office to come in to say, "I got this letter that these documents are missing, but I submitted the documents and now my case is on hold." It's an additional burden and additional obstacle for them to receive their services. So our staff want to understand, how do we better communicate with HRA? How do we better ensure that when we get the notice that documents are missing, we can ensure receipt of those documents?
All right, thank you. That's a really good question and something that we've been focusing on for many months now. With the increase in the number of applications and recertifications came additional documents. So a lot of people focus on the fact that, you know, we had a lot more work in application volume and recert volume. But also, whenever anyone, whether they were coming into a location or using the mobile app to upload that document, all of those documents had to be identified and labeled and then associated with a particular case. So that process is what we refer to as indexing. And we had, you know, backlogs in the indexing process because of the sheer volume of work. We had the ability to hire temporary employees to help us with indexing. And still, with the same issue that we are discussing about filling all of our other positions, it's been very difficult, even with the vacancies in temporary positions, to fill those positions, to get people to help us with the indexing so we can do it quicker. So we use some redeployed staff in order to help with indexing. And we're also looking at technology to see if we can make it possible so we can eliminate the number of steps it takes to identify and associate that case with a particular record. As First Deputy Barry mentioned, it's not just the staffing that we're leaning on. We are also looking at technology as much as possible and trying to use that technology to help to expedite processes.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember will stay followed by Councilmember Abreu.
Good morning. And I just want to start my questioning by thanking you all for the work that you do. It's not easy, especially given the testimony as well as, you know, what we experience in our offices every single day. This isn't easy work. Being a public servant isn't easy, especially during this pandemic, especially during this migrant crisis. And I know that you are, you know, some of the frontline workers in terms of how we're handling these problems in our city. The first question that I wanted to ask, and of course it pertains to the staff vacancies, is what is the starting salary for a caseworker?
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to get back to you on that, but they're relatively, you know, they're starting salaries for sure. But I do want to thank you for your words about our frontline staff, you know. They're mostly long-term employees, they've been around a long time, and they're not happy with the way things are going either.
And what would you say for those starting staff or those starting caseworkers? How long is it until they, you know, throw in the towel and quit?
I think we're, I know we're doing everything we can to make sure that they don't, right? We're trying to make sure that they feel supported, that the long-term staff are treating them well because they need these people to stay on and help and work with them. It is something that is important. I know Administrator Fitzpatrick and Assistant Deputy Commissioner Flores, when they're out in the field, they're talking to the new staff that are on board and encouraging them to stay and talking to people who've been around a long time to encourage them, to mentor these new people so that they will stay.
And what are some of the requirements that you are looking for when hiring some of these initial caseworkers in terms of, is there a college degree that is required? If you could expand on that, that'd be great.
Good morning, thank you. There are multiple requirements. They're either or. One is a college degree. If there's no college degree, there's certain levels of experience interacting with the public. I think it's about three or four years. I'd have to get back to you on the exact date, the exact timeframe. And there are, or a combination of, not necessarily a college degree, but some sort of intermediate schooling with some experience. So we don't necessarily, in my experience so far, have too much trouble at least identifying individuals to interview. And then, once we make the selection, that's when sometimes people either don't come on board or decide to do something else or the like. But as far as identifying candidates to do the work, we have a pretty good handle on.
Right. Thank you for that. So just to lay down the groundwork, and I know we all are aware of the many different elements that exist in our society and our city right now. But, you know, there are folks that are good-natured to want to go in this line of work and be a public servant. Say they went to college for four years, have student debt. And thank you colleague Williams, Councilmember Williams, for showing me the starting rate. But I'm seeing that the starting salary can range from $40,000 to $47,000. It is expensive to live in New York City. Inflation is a mess. And for, you know, a college graduate or someone that's, you know, been in the workforce for some time that wants to get into this line of work, that salary is not sustainable. Not only in terms of, you know, allowing them to live a day-to-day life in New York City, but to be doing this work that you all are doing where the pressure is on every single day. So would you say that a struggle that HRA or DSS has in terms of retaining caseworkers or retaining staff or even a problem in terms of addressing the vacancies could be the salaries or the budget that you have for the salaries for some of these, these starting caseworkers?
Absolutely. We are making some changes to the job opportunity specialists. There's no residency requirement for that title, which does help with recruitment for sure. And that's for the cash assistance program. On the SNAP program, the eligibility specialists, they do currently have a residency requirement. So one of the things that we are working closely in partnership with the Office of Labor Relations and DCAST is can we make some changes there? Can we make it a little bit easier for people to be able to take those jobs and live with those salaries? It is definitely something that we are looking at very closely. You're right.
And I know something else that you said in your testimonies or even answering the question is that quality in staff is something that you are looking for. And, you know, if I'm, you know, experienced in this line of work, maybe in the private sector, and I've made some money, but I want to go into some type of public service, and I see that, you know, a caseworker job for DSS or HRA is, you know, $41,000 to $47,000, I wouldn't apply for that job. Would it be something that you all would look into, potentially reducing? I know you have 20% vacancy for staff. If you reduced it to 10% and then increased the salary for those that wanted to be starting caseworkers, is that something that this agency would potentially look into or could you look into?
It's certainly something that we could look into in conjunction with the Office of Labor Relations, DCAST, and OMB. It's certainly not something that's off the table.
Do you think it would help?
I think that a lot of times, getting through the volume of work at this point without more waivers and technology in place, we also need people to do the work. It might be a combination of things. That in and of itself might not be enough, but that coupled with some other changes to processes could potentially be a big help to the agency.
Sorry, I know I'm over time, but the last thing I'll leave you with. The reason we're seeing a lot of staffing shortages countrywide isn't because people don't want to work anymore, it's because of how It's because of how expensive it is to be alive, to be able to afford rent, groceries. And I know every single person or most of us in this room feel that pressure. And when, you know, compensation for a job is taxing as the job and work that you do isn't at the rate that it should be, I can see that as being a deterrent to wanting to even apply or stay in this line of work. Thank you. Wait, one more thing. I also do want to shout out Jamar Hooks, who's, you know, give him a raise. He's consistently been.
Don't shout out Jamar. That's my friend.
He didn't ask. He didn't ask.
So consistent and in touch with our office and helping us with various different situations. So just want to acknowledge him.
Thank you, council member. We'll now hear from Councilmember Abreu.
Thank you to the administration. I saw in the testimony that you said there may be perhaps the need to preclude the legislation I'm proposing today. I'm here to say that I'm going to make sure that the council's behind us in full force and that this is going to be done legislatively. And even if it is something that is underway, it is always something that could be codified, just for the record. So I will start off by asking, what percentage of rental assistance voucher payments made to landlords are made electronically?
Currently, all NYCHA rent assistance payments are made electronically.
Okay. And what about for non-NYCHA?
We have some home TBRA payments that are also made electronically.
What percent?
We'll have to get back to you on that.
All right. This is literally a hearing on timeliness of payments and who's getting payments electronically or not. And you're saying that there's potentially no need for this legislation. What percentage are made by paper checks?
All the payments to private landlords are currently made by paper check.
So that means that there's zero electronic payments to private landlords, is the inverse answer to that?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. If most all, if most or all are not electronic, why aren't a greater number of payments made electronically?
So we're currently working on our landlord management system current. We have a pilot running right now with a, I guess it's not zero because we have nine landlords right now that are in our pilot, a very small number, that we're working through developing our system. It's not, and the system's not going to be electronic, just electronic funds transfer. It's going to be a comprehensive data system that will also allow landlords to not just receive the payment, but receive all the information about the payment. Which tenant is this payment for? What unit does that payment live in? What unit does that individual, is that payment for? What time period, what individual? All of that information will be in the system, not just the transfer of the funds from us to the landlord. And we think that that's really important to make sure many of our clients live in buildings. Landlords have many, more than one of our clients in their buildings. And we want to make sure that every client gets credited for the payment that we made on their behalf and gets credited correctly. So we believe strongly, and the system that we are in development on, will make sure that that comprehensive information is associated with every payment. And we're planning on rolling this out to CityFab's landlords in calendar year 2023.
How many landlords does HRA currently make payments to in the city?
Have to get back to you on that.
Is it fair to say it's less than 1% of the nine? Is it fair to say that nine landlords of the ones that you're working with would be less than 1% of the landlords?
It's a very small number.
Okay. Which speaks to the need to scale this and make sure that it works. When did this pilot program come about?
We've been working on the pilot. The current system has actually been in development for a number of years, building it from the ground up. And the pilot was started just in 2022 with landlords. The goal is not to just have just a small number of landlords participate, but to understand the kinks and the problems with the process and how it's programmed before rolling it out to a larger scale. Because as we include additional landlords, there might be problems and we want to make sure people get their payments on time. So we sent out a communication to landlords to get them to volunteer to participate in the process. We got some takers and we've been using that feedback from the landlords to understand what needs to be changed in the program, in the system, in order to best address their needs. Some landlords have multiple agents that are managing multiple buildings and we have to take that in consideration. It may not just be a one-on-one relationship like we've seen with NYCHA or with home TBRA, where it was easier to make those payments. And those were just, truly just electronic payments. Those were not a landlord management system. So since we want to make this a more comprehensive system for landlords, we really do value the feedback and are using that information in order to make sure that it is scalable.
Chair, can I get more time? It's about to end. Thank you. So it started a few years ago and is only being built up to nine landlords as of right now. Is that fair to say?
For the electronic funds transfer portion of it, as we said, the system is, it's a bigger system. It's also a system that is accepting applications for vouchers, allowing the voucher process and the approval of vouchers to go through the system. It is, it's a big complicated system. We make payments to thousands of landlords on behalf of our clients every single month. We want to be really careful as we're transitioning those into an electronic system, that we're not missing any payments, that there aren't delays in payments as we do that or missed payments as we do that. We agree that this is needed. That's why we've invested so much into developing this system. And it takes time.
And I find that the fact that it's scaled up to nine landlords only speaks to a very dire need for this legislation. It speaks to a dire need to make sure that families aren't in housing court because HRA has submitted a late payment or did not provide the means for someone to submit this payment electronically. I believe we can do this legislatively and working together. Thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Lee.
Hi. Good morning, I think, everyone. So I just wanted to say thank you as well because I'm a social worker and ran a nonprofit organization before I joined the council. And we actually did partner with HRA because you were at one of our DIFTA-funded senior centers, I believe, once a month. And I just had a, I was just thinking about this in terms of the caseloads and seeing that obviously there, there's multiple factors and issues sort of happening at once, which is that the caseloads are increasing. I totally get the staffing issue because even across the board, the number one issue in the mental health sector, health sector, nonprofit sector is finding people to fill these jobs. And so that part I do fully get and understand, and it was tough for us to fill certain positions as well. But, so in terms of the caseload, and I don't know what the legality is here, but is there a way to perhaps expand some of the requirements to be able to partner with nonprofit organizations that have the built-in infrastructure and clientele and language capacity to help assist with some of the caseload work perhaps that HRA has? And I just wanted to actually clarify, the 84,000 applications that were received, is that only through your centers or is it also through the centers that you contract with externally?
So that's all applications? We don't contract out the application work?
Okay. So is that something, I guess, that could be looked into in terms of if you have, and I understand that this wouldn't help towards the count in your numbers for staffing and employees, right? But, and again, this is where I don't know what the legalities of it are, and I'm sure there are issues there. But, for example, if someone was coming to our senior center once a month to help our clients, is that something where perhaps certain pieces of the responsibilities could be parceled out so that, you know, the groups could be, for example, a nonprofit partner could be identified, contracted with, contracting with HRA, and the staff and the caseworkers at the nonprofit could help prepare everything? And the person, when they do come once a month, they would help streamline that process? So I'm just trying to think through in terms of what can be done to help, you know, streamline and make that process more efficient, given that there are staffing shortages?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. You're 100% right. Your ideas are spot-on and correct. Working, we have, we have been and we continue to work with our CBO partners. We provide them with training and with tools to, to work with clients, applicants, and recipients to complete their applications and recertifications. And the real value is, they can help make sure that the application is complete, that all the documentation is submitted. So that makes our job a lot easier, absolutely 100%. And to your point about the contracting with, what this administration is doing under this, the Adams administration is, benefits access is really important. And we've spent a lot of time over the years making benefits access easier for our agency through Access HRA and other tools, as we've discussed. But they're going, they have already added money and we are, we will be contracting with CBOs specifically to do this work of helping even more people access our services and our benefits, doing exactly what you said.
And quick, one last quick question. In order to have someone come to an off-site location, I think there was a certain number range of clients that needed to be there, that were at that center, for example. So is it something where, you know, if you build it, they will come, right? So, for example, I know some smaller groups that serve like the Bangladeshi Communion Queens, they don't necessarily have numbers yet, but I would imagine that once this service is offered there, they will have a lot more people that could potentially come to that site. So is there something that also could be looked at in terms of the requirements of what it takes for someone to go to a site as well?
Yeah. So thank you for that question. I would say two things about that. One is that, just like all the other areas of our agency, that they too are a little bit short-staffed. But one of the things that we developed and developed well during the pandemic is to be able to help some people remotely through Zoom. And that tool allows us to help places where there may not be the volume that would be needed to justify having somebody travel out and spend time. But through Zoom, makes it a lot easier to help smaller communities to do that kind of work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Councilmember Russler.
Chair Ayala, thank you so much for your leadership of this committee, which has been just incredibly impressive. And I can think of no more urgent hearing topic than the one we're focused on today. I have a great deal of respect for the people who work at HRA. Administrator Fitzpatrick, First Deputy Commissioner Berry, I've had the privilege of working with you both, and the teams at HRA, who don't get enough credit for their competence and their hard work to deliver for low-income and vulnerable New Yorkers. If you need to find a city agency where you want to actually get stuff done, I don't think there's a better place to call than HRA. However, it's impossible to do your job if you don't have people. So my first question is, has you both, how many years have you each been working at HR and at DSS?
I'll answer. I've been with the agency for 38 years.
38? Wow! God, that's got to be a record, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Yes, thank you.
And we're better served as a city because of it. Yes?
Yeah. I've been with the city for more than 20 years, HRA about 15 years.
Okay. And in your respective 38 and 15-odd years at HRA, so maybe I'll just ask this one to Lisa, if you don't mind, have you ever experienced a headcount of 10,410 people at HRA?
Thank you for that question and thank you for recognizing the great work that the team at HRA does on a day-to-day basis. The headcount issues are.
But just, yes, you know how much I respect and admire you.
No, I haven't, I have not. And we are prioritizing the hiring of all frontline staff.
I know you are. Or you say you are. We'll see. But the, but 38 years? Back then, we even had other agencies that had merged into DSS. They've been merged, unmerged. We've seen a lot of changes. But have you ever seen a headcount as low as 10,410 in your 38 years of experience at HRA?
No, I have not.
No, that's the key.
But when I started in 1984, we also did not have the technology that we have in place now.
There have been lots of changes.
Right.
But in 38 years, never have we seen such austerity from HRA. By failing to fund HRA, we are hurting the most vulnerable New Yorkers. By failing to staff HRA adequately, low and moderate income New Yorkers can't access the critical, vital, essential benefits they need to live. Too many people are on the margins of New York City and we are failing them because you all don't have the staff. And this commitment, insistence on austerity by this administration is a disgrace, plain and simple. So I just have a few questions for how that's manifesting itself. And I, again, I don't hold you all responsible for the broader policy decisions, but we've got to staff up as quickly as possible. So maybe I'll ask this one to the First Deputy Commissioner, Ms. Berry. How many people did HRA hire in November? New employees?
We're going to have to get back to you on that number.
10? 20? Was it more than 100?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, we'll come back to it in writing. I'll tell you the information that we've informally received from advocates. 20 people. I don't, I can't verify it. I don't know if it's true. So we, you all have a great HR operation. We'd be interested to hear it, if that's accurate. But I'd like the hard number. And I'd like to understand what's actually happening day-to-day and the speed at which we're moving to staff up this agency. I'd like to now just ask a little bit about the impacts of the lack of hiring, the lack of staff at HRA. SNAP recertification applications, and I apologize that I'm late, so if I'm repeating anything, Diana, you should just kick me. But SNAP recertification applications, fully federally funded, right? How many cases are delayed over 30 days?
We're going to have to get back to you with the number.
So don't know how many cases are delayed over 30 days, 60 days? Fully federally funded operation, we just don't, fully federally funded benefit, but we don't know how, we don't have the details. Okay. My understanding is we're facing significant delays and certainly we've seen it reported in the press.
Councilmember Russler, the benefits are fully federally funded.
The benefits are. But if we don't have the staff to process it, then we can't even take a fully federally funded benefit and connect it to New Yorker in need who doesn't have access to food, who is starving, who is struggling, who cannot pay their rent, who cannot get by because we don't have the staff. It's just, I realize it's hard during a pandemic. Hiring has been challenging. Lots of city agencies are suffering from vacancies. But when we have a 20% vacancy rate at HRA, we are failing the New Yorkers who depend on us most. And it's not that I question you all's competence. I admire you. I really do. I meant that. If there's not an agency I'd rather go to for a complex new initiative than HRA to figure it out, but if you don't have the people, there's no point. So my frustration is real. It's not, so, next up. Can I just go for one more second? I know you all got to go too probably, so I apologize, I was late. But expedited SNAP. My understanding is that everybody would be reviewed for expedited SNAP within five days. Is HRA still reviewing and screening all clients for expedited SNAP?
Yes, it's part of our process. When people submit applications through Access HRA, we do a screening for expedited supplemental nutrition assistance program assistance.
And how many, because, and how many people, so do you, do you have any data? I imagine you don't, based on the previous questions. But how many people receive expedited SNAP within five days?
And we'll have to get back to you with this.
Because my understanding is right now it's zero. And so if that's not true, then tell me. Okay. Lisa's saying I'm wrong. I'll accept that I'm wrong, but we'd love to get the data. So thank you to Committee Counsel for helping us follow up on all of these things. We really appreciate it. Last question. And then I just want to make one comment. Clients scan documents at HRA centers to be reviewed by staff. We're hearing from advocates that clients have been denied benefits because HRA says they don't have documentation despite clients scanning it. How long does it take for a document to be added to a client file after they scan it? Will HRA start providing receipts to clients who scan documents so they have proof that those items were submitted?
The scanning process was also related to, the delays in scanning was also related to the delays in processing because of the high application and recertification volume. We currently scan documents as they are received. We're looking into ways to automate this process even further to reduce the time that it takes to identify that particular document. But clients do get receipts after cases, after their information is scanned.
Okay. There seems to be, I'd love to learn a little more about the process because we're getting a lot of complaints about it in our office and from advocates. I hope that you all will consider for cash assistance, oh, sorry, for recertification applications for cash assistance, taking a similar approach as you do for SNAP benefits. taking a similar approach as you do for SNAP benefits that allow HRA clients to call in for an interview. We think this would make improved operations significantly. I just, I will close and say in this, I really mean my comments at the beginning about how much I respect the work and the people and the leadership at HRA. I hope that we can put all of the effort that you have put into such great initiatives over the years into hiring. And that this administration will not stop you from bringing on the people that you need to fill these vacancies. Because vulnerable New Yorkers are suffering. They are suffering. They're unable to access the benefits they need. I know you can't be happy with the state of affairs that we are dealing with today. I know you all want to see those processing times and those approvals tighten up and get better. I know you do. I know that's why you do this work. But you can't do without staff. And so I really, really hope, and I know many of my colleagues have asked questions about this today, that you are putting all of the effort of the agency into staffing up so that you can do the work that needs to be done to help New Yorkers in need. Anything we can do from the council side to be helpful or supportive, just let me know. Because I'd be happy to identify folks across my district who would love, love, love to work at HRA if there was ever an opportunity. So thank you for the work you do. And, you know, thank you Chair Ayala for calling attention to the absolutely dismal state of affairs that need to be addressed due to understaffing and austerity politics.
Thank you, Councilmember Russler. I mean, I agree. I think that for me, what's a little bit frustrating and I think a little bit unclear is really the sense of urgency, right? And we want to be helpful, we want to be able to help you all, you know, staff up in a way that allows these applications to be processed in a timely manner. I'll tell you, I was a recipient of, you know, of benefits many moons ago. And I remember sitting at their HRA office for two days, waiting just for someone to tell me that I was eligible for food stamps and then offering an appointment for a later date. And so there's a lot of already bureaucracy within the department, whether we want to, you know, admit that or not, there is. You know, all the paperwork and the faxing and, you know, the clearance. And we want to be able to make these, the processing of these applications as seamless as possible. But I'm just not convinced yet that the sense of urgency is there. And I don't, I don't understand why. So if I'm a New Yorker and I'm applying for benefits today, and I have cases too, I mean, it's not even just people waiting for benefits, but on the rental assistance portion, right, of the work that you do. I have constituents, I have a constituent whose daughter was murdered, who's a City FEPs recipient, and now has to worry every month because she keeps getting notices from her landlord that her rent is not paid. That's an undue burden, right, that's unnecessary. If we were not only processing those payments on time, but at least acknowledging and letting people know, right? Because if I had, if I have the knowledge to be able to, you know, to understand what's happening and I can relay that information, it gives me a little bit of peace of mind. I may not like it, but at least I understand what's happening. The worst thing is to be kind of in the dark. And I think that, you know, the clients are feeling like they're being left in the dark because they're not understanding, you know, what's happening internally. So I know that the, that HRA, I know I've spoken to the commissioner about this, that there have been active conversations with the state and the federal government about the waivers. How comfortable are you, you know, how confident are you that we're going to see a resolution to this, you know, soon?
First of all, thank you for calling this hearing on this important topic because it is important. It's important. It is very important to us. We are 100% committed to this. And it's very important to New Yorkers who need our services. So please, please understand that we are taking this very seriously. We are very committed. And we speak with our state partners near daily to try to come up with ways that are allowed under current federal and state laws and waiver opportunities to make this process better, better for our staff and better for our clients.
Yeah. I just, you know, I'm frustrated not with, not with, you know, with you all and not with the, with HRA per se. But I, this summer, you know, we saw a staffing shortage at the Parks Department that meant that some pools wouldn't open because we didn't have enough lifeguards. It was like a national crisis, right, there was a shortage of lifeguards. And at some point, there was a, you know, a level of interaction between the city and the state to allow for a more expeditious, you know, process, right, waiving certain requirements and an increase in salary, right, to ensure that we were able to attract and staff up as quickly as possible. That was important, right? We want people to swim safely, but it wasn't, you know, a necessity. And I, you know, and I like to compartmentalize things that we like and things that we need. And we need public benefits, right? These are people that are waiting, you know, to pay rent, maybe to pay, you know, their cell phones. And maybe that may be the only lifeline that they have, right? The only way of communicating. And how are they going to contact HRA and upload documents if they can't pay the phone? How are they going to feed their families? You know, I just, I really, I don't, I don't know what the solution here is. But I would love to hear that we're on the cusp of, you know, figuring this out. It seems to me like it's been an ongoing issue since the pandemic and it, you know, began. And it looks like at some point, there was some sort of, at least, relief because of the waivers and, but have you received any assurances from the state? I mean, I just, I've made calls on this, you know. I've been putting in calls and, I mean, I've been doing that already for almost two months. So, and I still haven't seen or heard anything that's positive. I haven't gotten back any responses that says, hey, you know, like, this is happening. This is how we're going to remedy this.
Yeah, appreciate that. I mean, we did get relief from the state to be able to advance some of the research in November and December, which has helped us tremendously, especially after not having that option in October. So the state is, is just as committed as we are to helping to work through these backlogs.
Okay. Now, are we, is HRA seeing applicants? Or is it, like, I'm trying to understand, is it, is it a salary issue? Is it unqualified applicants? Is it that we have, I mean, what does the applicant, the application pool look like? Are we able to, you know, have you seen an increase in applications? Or is this just, these are jobs that people are not applying for?
Good morning, Councilwoman. We are seeing incoming applicants. We are seeing qualified applicants, and we are able to interview them. We interview on a weekly basis on the cash assistance. I know my counterpart in the SNAP program is interviewing as well on a weekly basis. We probably, out of 20 applicants that we are interviewing, 15 of them will show up and will likely be passed forward for, they'll be selected and then move on to the next step. And then somewhere in between that process, they may get another job or they may get a different opportunity where we won't necessarily see all of them come back and actually be hired on our. But from just the applicant pool, I think we see a good amount of people showing interest and interviewing with us. And so on that, to that question, I think we have a decent applicant pool, a good applicant pool.
Have you been working with any of the community colleges to try to recruit?
We, I'd have to get back to you on that one, I'm not 100% sure.
I think that's a good resource, you know, I would definitely go there. And I have spoken to some of the presidents. I spoke to the president of Lehman a couple of weeks ago about this as well. But I was a graduate of Bronx Community College with a human resources administration, a human resources associate's degree. And I would have loved, you know, to go and work for HRA. And I think, right, as a starting point, what, you know, it's a great way to gain the experience necessary, right, for other things. But definitely, I think you should use that as a resource.
It's a great idea, and if we're not already, we'll make sure we do.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, so I have to ask some procedural questions because, you know, my staff worked really hard on these and I want to make sure that we get them on record. But I'll try to be quick because I know that we're short on time. So regarding the Info Line, what is the capacity of the Info Line? And how many calls get dropped by the system on average? And what is the average call wait on the Info Line?
So for Info Line, the current wait time is around 45 minutes, which, you know, a little bit longer than we'd like, but 45 minutes. And we've expanded access on Wednesdays from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., which is new for us, allowing people who may be working to act, to call into Info Line. It's been pretty popular to call in during that time. Calls are no longer being routinely dropped as they were during the pandemic. We were able to shift from an older technology to a newer technology so that we're not routinely dropping calls anymore. That certainly was a thing that was happening in the past and is not what's happening today.
That's a good thing. Regarding the application recertification. So this relates to when cases get closed for recertifications and then clients must reapply. Per advocates, this is a waste of resources and ends up affecting clients negatively as they go out, they go without benefits for months until their cases get reopened. Churning also means that one-shot deal applications require a repeat application process, applications because HRA's delays are non-action. Of the successful applications for cash assistance with a breakout for one-shot deal applications, how many represent repeat applications where more than one application was filed during the period of the prior three months or the prior six months?
We'll have to get back to you on the exact numbers. But as Administrator Fitzpatrick testified earlier, we often cases hold one-shot applications a little bit longer than we're required to, specifically so that people have more time to get us the documents that are needed. Like Administrator Fitzpatrick said, sometimes landlords aren't so willing to work with tenants to provide them with necessary documents. So we try to keep those open as long as possible to get the documents in so that they don't have to submit new applications for one shot.
So if I'm applying for a one-shot deal and I'm in housing court facing eviction, is there a way that the court can determine whether there's a pending application for a one-shot deal to pay, you know, rent retroactively?
Yeah, we have HRA staff outstationed in all of the housing courts. And they can refer clients to the HRA desk or the HRA room in housing court. And they can get information on the spot about what's happening with that application for assistance. And many times, even if we have to go ahead and reject the case, but the case is still, the client is still trying to get that documentation from their landlords, we don't require them to start the entire process all over again. We'll just reopen or reactivate that application so then we can just go ahead and pay the rent arrears if the household is qualified for them.
Okay. Is there a maximum amount that a person may be eligible for? Like, is there a cap for one-shot deals? Because I've seen pretty, you know...
I think it varies. It depends on the household composition, the amount of the rent, whether or not there's excess rent, the client's future ability to pay the rent. There are a lot of factors that are involved with determining whether or not households eligible for that one-shot assistance.
New funding for supportive housing staff. In fiscal year 2023, the executive plan, HRA added 5.8 million in baseline funding along with 10 new positions for supportive housing staff. Can you please provide an update on the impact of this addition and any improvements that have been made? And how many positions have been filled?
We actually had 34 positions that we were hiring for, for supportive housing. And 76% of those are already filled, which gives us about 26 new employees. We still have eight positions that are in the pipeline in various stages of recruitment before we can give them a start date.
That's great. Regarding the new benefits access project, the fiscal year 2023 adopted plan added 14 million in fiscal year 2023 for new projects to improve benefits access. In our conversations with OMB and HRA, we have been told that this would include a media campaign and contracted services for CBOs. For the CBOs, an RFP over the summer was put out over the summer seeking groups to provide benefit assistance, outreach, and education. Submissions were due on September 13th, 2022. How much of the 14 million will go towards the media spending?
So we'll have to get back to you with the specifics on the funding allocations, but we're really excited about this initiative. CBO partners are an important part of benefits access for our programs. And giving, through this RFP, they will now get some funding to hopefully be able to expand a lot of the great work that they already do on the behalf of our clients.
Okay. And so can you also share, when you, when you get back to us, how much of the budget will go towards contracting CBOs? And what services will CBOs be contracted to do? Staffing for benefits program. The exact number of budgeted and actual positions for the administration of key benefit programs such as SNAP, Medicaid, cash assistance, and rental vouchers is not clear from publicly available budget documents. So it is commingled in program areas and other programs. Additionally, unknown is the number of vacant positions that there currently are for each benefit program. Do HRA staff typically work on multiple programs? For example, SNAP or cash assistance? Or do they specialize in a single benefit program such as SNAP?
They absolutely specialize in a particular benefit program. And part of, part of that is this, each program rule is very different. Each technology tool that's used to develop eligibility is very different. And the federal and state funding sources for the staff are very different.
Okay. We'd also be interested in knowing how many positions would be required to eliminate the current processing delays, which I know that Councilmember Osay referenced. I have two more questions regarding the Shelter to Housing Action Plan. On November 14th, 2022, the mayor announced a new plan to move homeless clients into permanent housing more quickly and city funding for, it was added in the November 2022 plan. In fiscal year 2023, 4.5 million was added to HRA's budget, including 62 positions. In fiscal year 2024, 8.9 million was added, including 124 positions. What will the additional headcount be used for? And what is HRA's hiring and training plan to get the positions filled?
All of these additional headcount are going to help us to make sure that we have the staff and resources needed to process housing vouchers from applicants from the community and in our shelters. We need to get those City FEPs applications and payments all processed faster, and this will help us towards that.
Is there a significant delay in the processing of vouchers as well?
So the cash assistance backlogs, you have to, for many of these programs, you need to be on cash assistance in order to qualify for the programs. So there's an impact there, right? But what we have done is we've partnered with DHS to make sure that they can flag for us cases that are pending a cash assistance application decision in order to move that City FEPs voucher or other voucher forward so that we can prioritize those in the queues.
Is there a way to track what the number of applicants that lost housing as a result of the delay is? Do you capture that data?
We'd have to get back to you, I'm not sure that we do.
Okay. And regarding the interviews, what is the number and the percentage of HRA staff with HRA telephones that can be called back? Namely, phones that accept incoming calls so a client can call back and get an interview?
So the procedure is for all staff, when they make the first and the second call, to leave their phone number to be called back? Do you want to add?
Sure. We made that change around June or July so that staff are now told to leave their phone number so that if the client misses their interview call, they will be able to return the call. It's only, the only ones that we don't leave the phone number for is if somebody's teleworking from home and using their personal device or the like. But the vast majority, once we started returning to the offices, we started making the change to leave those phone numbers because they are at their desks doing those interviews.
Okay. And last question, just because it's still bothering me about this phishing scam. In your conversations with the state, have they, have they mentioned anything about any level of like reimbursement, you know, initiative? Like, is there an opportunity to do that? I mean, I would imagine that if an individual can, you know, can prove, right? Maybe even get a, what do you call that, an NYPD report, right, that they've been scammed? Would that be sufficient to qualify them for some level of reimbursement, even if it's not the full amount?
Yeah, so unfortunately, federal and state law prohibit the replacement of benefits currently. So that's the real barrier.
I mean, I know that they do that. But considering the circumstances, has there been any conversation about reviewing that policy?
Yeah, we continue to advocate with our state partners. It's on our legislative agenda as a high priority item. It's really important to us.
Okay. We'll be sure to bring it up as part of our state legislative agenda as well.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all for coming today. I think that, you know, this is a really important hearing and I'm hoping that we're able to find a resolution, you know, as quickly as possible. We want to make sure that New Yorkers in need are no longer, you know, burdened with having to wait, you know, additional... longer, you know, burdened with having to wait, you know, additional amounts of time to receive the services that they need to be able to thrive successfully in their homes. So thank you all for coming here today.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker Ayala, and we are 100% committed to making this better.
Thank you. And I also want to thank the staff. I know that they do work really hard and it isn't easy. So any support that we can lend, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. We're going to now move to public testimony for today and we are going to begin with an in-person panel. The first panel of public witnesses for today will be as follows. Kathleen Kelleher, Marco Ballestri, Nicholas Bress and Jimmy Marr. And just for folks that are joining us virtually and to everyone, just a reminder that I'm going to be calling up individuals in panels. For those who are going to be testifying virtually, which is the panel that will follow this current panel, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and then you may begin your testimony once the sergeant-at-arms sets the clock and gives you the cue. For all public testimony, it's going to be limited to three minutes. And remember, for those who are joining us virtually, that there is a few seconds delay, at which point you would be unmuted before we can actually hear you. So please wait for the sergeant-at-arms to announce that you may begin before you start your testimony for those who are testifying virtually. And now we will begin with our first public panel in person. So over now to Kathleen Kelleher to begin.
Good morning. Thank you Chair Ayala, and thanks to HRA for coming today and sharing their testimony on this crisis of delays. So my name is Kathleen Kelleher. I'm a staff attorney at the Legal Aid Society, the oldest and largest civil legal services, legal services organization in the country. And I'm going to cut, I'm not going to do a big intro because I have, time is so short, I want to get right to the issues. So rather than actually give like a prepared statement, I would like to respond to HRA's testimony and talk about the crisis. So the first thing I want to say is that I completely agree with all the other questioners and panelists, which is that I don't question the commitment of HRA to serve low-income New Yorkers. But what is happening is that there is, what is happening is a crisis. I've worked at the Legal Aid Society for 30 years and this is the worst I've seen it. So what happened is COVID hit. There were some federal rule changes that permitted HRA to respond, thank God, so that New Yorkers could access benefits. Some of those rules went away. Demand remained because COVID is still a reality for our clients. The economy is still hit and HRA referred to that. So what we heard in their testimony is that they admitted that they are, that they are, do not have the resources to address the problem. So what I'm puzzled by is that this was a hearing about delays. HRA had notice of the hearing about delays. They issued a prepared statement that included no statistics and the only statistics that they gave today were those that are published in the mayor's management report. They came today with no statistics other than what is available, which is horrible. What they plainly said is that they're violating the law. They are not providing SNAP benefits, federal SNAP benefits in over 50% of the cases. That is an outrage and they don't have a plan to address it on any month-by-month basis. What they told you is that there are 2,000 unfilled positions. At best, they think they're going to get, it sounded to me like 1,000. And I think that they hired well less than 100 people last month to perform services for people who need SNAP and cash assistance benefits. I think they hired in the month of November 20 people. So we need this, we need, the City of New York needs a Marshall Plan to address the crisis that is facing low-income New Yorkers. People may get their benefits retroactive when HRA gets around to processing them, when they don't, when there are delays, but people can't eat retroactively. What are you supposed to do in the meantime? When people apply for benefits and they're not decided in a timely way, they are expected to just go without. That is, the city needs a plan to address it and I didn't hear HRA give one. So I would urge the council to to demand that. And also, I just want to say, I know my time's up, but I heard many of the council members mention FEPs and city FEPs and I want to make sure that it's clear that those delays do exist in those programs as well, including with respect to the contractors, the home-based providers that serve that program. So just like all of the other delay statistics, HRA should produce statistics on what the delays are for city FEPs and FEPs, which are processed by HRA itself and by home-based providers, because that's a reality and I know all the council members are seeing that with their own constituents. So thanks a lot. I'm sorry that time is so short. I guess that's, that's all I have time to fit in. Thank you.
Now to Marco Ballestri.
Hello and good morning. Thank you Chair Ayala. My name is Marco Ballestri and I am a legal advocate at the Neighborhood Defender Service of Harlem, where we represent tenants in northern Manhattan. We assist with public benefits applications and voucher applications. I want to quickly just highlight a few things that were discussed from HRA's testimony about the phone interviews and the lack of responsiveness, the lack of disability accommodations, and then to speak again on the issue with home-based providers that are handling the city FEPs applications. So as highlighted, the understaffing, underfunding has put great strains on the public benefits application system. In our experience, housing court judges are simply not willing to wait for resolutions on these applications and have allowed evictions to proceed, rendering people homeless amid an ongoing shelter crisis. The initial application process, the interview that is now transferred over to the phone, HRA is required on their website to call within seven days of submitting a cash assistance application, but we rarely observe HRA comply with this timeline and have seen it take upwards of four weeks in many cases. This is the same with emergency one-shot deal applications as well for rental assistance. After two calls, cases are closed, requiring the process to start all over again, and we've received several one-shot deal rejections because of a failure to complete an interview, with most, if not all, of our clients reporting that they never received the phone calls in the first place. Reapplying for a one-shot deal can delay assistance by more than a month. We are also witnessing significant issues with clients who have disabilities trying to complete interviews and produce documents for their applications for cash assistance. HRA's solution for requesting accommodations such as a home visit to complete an interview is to submit a reasonable accommodation request. However, we have found that these requests often take several weeks and months to be granted. In one particular case, a disabled client with severe respiratory issues who lives in a fifth-floor walk-up missed her SNAP recertification. The client did not have a working cell phone and could not travel to the HRA center. Our team submitted countless accommodation requests to schedule, a home visit, but our emails and calls were never answered. The client then lost SNAP benefits and faced significant food insecurity and starvation for an entire month. It was only after tremendous advocacy, months-long advocacy, that a routine case was resolved. I want to again highlight the issues with the home-based providers, which are HRA contractors who handle rental assistance in the city FEPs voucher application. Homebase is the exclusive processor of the city FEPs voucher. Unlike HRA centers, home-based providers are do not, are not subject to the same type of public oversight and regulation and they're severely understaffed and lack necessary resources. The understaffing combined with systemic inefficiencies and little oversight have created an insurmountable barrier for our clients seeking city FEPs applications and in one instance directly caused our client to become homeless. These applications, in our experience, can take anywhere between six months to one year. This is time our clients simply do not have an impending eviction case. Thank you so much for the testimony.
Thank you.
Over to Nicholas.
Hi, good morning Chair Ayala. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. I'm Nick Buse from the Food Bank for New York City. You probably know the food bank from our food distribution. We serve 700 community-based organizations from our 90,000-square-foot warehouse in the South Bronx. But we also run one of the biggest free tax assistance programs and we help people with SNAP, which is what I'm talking about today. We do that on three fronts. First, we work directly with clients through our call center. Second, we we train community-based organizations to do different types of outreach, assistance, all the way down to technical assistance for people who are access HRA navigators or paperless office system providers. And finally, we operate the New York City SNAP Task Force, which is a collaboration with HRA, the state's Office of Temporary Disability Assistance, as well as 40 community-based organizations citywide. Through that task force, we operate what's called the mediation model, which resolves client issues often without having to go through the fair hearing process. So since we relaunched that process online, 92% of clients are able to have resolution without going through fair hearing. So it's an effective way for for clients to get assistance. Collectively, that work brings in 39, brought in $39 million of SNAP benefits last year, just within the task force, community-based organization services. So it's really, of course, these are federal dollars, so it's an effective program. This work would not be possible without the direct help from the city council, from the Food Access and Benefits Initiative and a partnership with HRA. So we're a food bank. We know that food banks don't replace SNAP benefits, but when benefits are unavailable, people turn to the emergency food network. And the reality of the emergency food network right now is that the supply that we have is down. The food that we were distributing during the pandemic increased, the the public and private supports increased during the pandemic, but those resources are gone. So citywide, the emergency food network is strained. So what I want to say today is, number one, thanks to you for the attention for this issue and processing. SNAP is the lifeline for people. It is the first line of defense against hunger. We know this as a food bank. Secondly, thank you to Councilmember Williams for her introduction 641 about expediting and providing assistance at SNAP centers. I also want to thank Councilmember Lee for her questions and comments about providing assistance through the community-based organization network. So that's what I want to share is that we urge the city to help provide access to food by investing in community-based organizations, of course, fortifying food pantries and soup kitchens to bridge the gap when SNAP benefits are delayed. Thank you.
Over to Jimmy.
Good morning and thank you Chair Ayala. My name is Jimmy Marr. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I am Policy Director at Safe Horizon, the nation's largest nonprofit victim services organization. Safe Horizon offers a client-centered, trauma-informed help to 250,000 New Yorkers each year who've experienced violence or abuse. In 2022, Safe Horizon completed a listening tour of clients and advocates throughout our agency and we found the top two priorities for survivors are permanent housing and financial stability. Economic stability and independence are foundational to safety. So many survivors don't have the choice to leave their abusive partner, even if they want to, due to economic reasons rooted in systemic sexism and racism. Unfortunately, our city's response to the needs of survivors and runaway and homeless youth, or RHY, has been inadequate and the systems designed to help our most vulnerable neighbors haven't always done so. Our government should be providing compassionate and timely care, but ultimately, our clients experience significant delays, bureaucratic hurdles and impossible barriers to housing and financial well-being. I'll focus my testimony on feedback from two of our programs, our DV shelter programs and also our streetwork project, which is our runaway and homeless youth program. Both of them work closely with HRA. From our DV shelters, HRA takes too long to issue housing vouchers, to update vouchers and to process housing packets. It is taking two to three months to process housing packets and most landlords cannot or will not hold vacant apartments that long. Delays are preventing survivors from leaving shelter. A survivor's time in DV shelter is limited under state law, so they are losing precious time looking for an apartment. We're advocating for HRA to be transparent with information and send timely notifications to clients. HRA housing inspections take too long. They don't respond to emails in a timely manner. Client information is not always accurate or updated and some landlords just choose not to engage with HRA due to these delays and headaches. Because HRA does not pay rent on time, landlords do not want to accept vouchers administered by HRA. Our experience is it's not necessarily source of income discrimination, but just not wanting to deal with HRA at all. Survivors are losing out on apartments. We've experienced many issues with HRA's different systems, detailed in our written testimony, but ultimately we would recommend that HRA use the CAP system, which works well, instead of current. From our streetwork project, we have many issues with the interview process required to access benefits. Clients can apply remotely but must wait for a phone call. Sometimes that phone call never comes. Our runaway and homeless youth are answering unknown numbers, hoping it's HRA. This can be stressful, dangerous and very scary to be answering unknown unknown numbers. It would be helpful if HRA allowed folks to schedule the day and time of the interview and to actually staff the on-demand interview phone number. Clients must repeatedly resubmit documents that HRA already has. I think we can all agree that's arbitrary. And in our experience, the city prioritizes unhoused New Yorkers residing in the DHL shelter system over survivors in the HRA DV shelter system and RHY in the DYCD shelter system. We're asking the administration to put an immediate end to this siloed system and stop pitting unhoused people against one another. The rest is in my written testimony, but thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, and you're right, Katie, like people cannot eat retroactively. That's, this has been weighing really heavily on on my mind for the last, you know, few weeks and I just don't understand why, you know, how it got to this point and, you know, I didn't hear any alarm being rung, you know, and that's the part of it that's frustrating the crap out of me because, you know, we're able to do it, we're able to pivot and to find ways to address emergency situations, you know, as more efficiently and, you know, and I get it, like we're in the middle, we're still in the midst of this pandemic that has left so many things uncertain and every city agency at this point is seriously understaffed. And you cannot force people to take these positions, but then I think that we pivot, right? And we try to figure out, well, what is it about this position that's so unattractive? Is that, you know, do we need to, you know, maybe move to a remote, you know, system? Do we, you know, increase the the starting salary rates? Like, what exactly are the impediments that are keeping folks from wanting? And I know that, you know, I do credit HRA and I know that they've been working with ECAS because we've also organized a number of job fairs with them, but I'll tell you, it's not just dumb and this is a workforce development issue. Citywide, the city has to really invest time in in really analyzing what the core, the root cause of this this crisis is because it's, nobody wants a job in the city anymore and and that speaks volumes. These are, these are oftentimes very overwhelming cases when you're working with the public and families that are being evicted, families that are victims of crime, right? It's heavy work and, you know, on top of that, if you have to worry about being able to make your own rent and buy your own food and pay, you know, back your student loans because, you know, the work that you're doing, which is, you know, pretty time and emotionally consuming, doesn't pay enough, then we're doing something really, really wrong here. But, you know, so what is, I mean, do you have any recommendations that maybe we're not looking at other than, you know, trying to staff our way out of this crisis? And this is for any one of you. Katie?
Yes, I think that there, well, first of all, I think that HRA needs to acknowledge the crisis and they need to actually create a corrective action plan to detail how they will get out of the backlog, because I really haven't heard that yet.
I haven't either.
And that's number one. Number two, there are some federal waivers that HRA has not sought, and I don't understand why, that would give them some relief, I think. So that one of the waivers that got previously from USDA was to waive interviews for certain SNAP applicants and the waivers that they had expired and subsequently USDA put out a rule that said that they would consider additional waivers because of the workload that was created, not just because of COVID, but also related to COVID, the public health emergency, so that they acknowledge that agencies that also have to administer Medicaid like HRA are so jammed up because all of them, on the Medicaid side of the agency, they have to renew all of those Medicaid cases. So what they said was, we will entertain new waivers that can be extended for up to 12 months of any kind. So what we have asked HRA to do, and inexplicably they have not done it, is why don't they go back and ask for a waiver to get rid of, to reduce the number of cases that have to have application and recertification interviews? It wouldn't solve everything, but any steps that they can take to reduce their workload should reduce the backlog. should reduce the backlog, you know? Like, we are sympathetic to the idea that, you know, let's, you know, they should fight on every front. And I don't know why they have not requested that waiver. I also don't know why, I think there should be like a louder drumbeat because we understand that this is a crisis nationwide, that, that our clients, who are eligible for SNAP benefits, are not getting them in a timely way in lots of places, not just New York City. And, but it's just hushed up, you know? Like, people, it's a benefit that people are entitled to, and I was so struck by the example that you gave of the lifeguards. And, I mean, I was thinking to myself, a city service, sanitation, what if someone said, the sanitation, you know, we're going to cut sanitation by over 50%? Would people just shut up about it and say, like, well, hopefully it'll get better? I don't think so.
You're right.
I don't think so. So, but that is one of the, they should do that, and they also think that HRA should also be required to, on a monthly basis, report the delay data. So now, they are only reporting because it's in the mayor's management report. There are timeliness statistics in the mayor's management report for cash assistance and SNAP application timeliness. I'm quite sure that's why that's the only statistic they gave, because it's the only one that's already publicly available. They also need to give the statistic for how many cases are delayed for recertifications every month. Because what that means, for people, for example, who've filled out a recertification that included SNAP benefits, because the federal law, under federal law, a SNAP certification period is, is a defined period of time. It has to end after 12 months. So if you do not recertify, you're actually done with your benefits, and they terminate. So what that means, if HRA has not gotten to your recertification case on time, suddenly, you go to get your benefits, and there are no SNAP benefits there. They're just missing. You didn't get a notice. Nobody told you you weren't getting them. They're just not there. And you have no idea when HRA is going to get around to completing your recertification. And, and HRA should be, you know, obliged to report how many thousands, and there are thousands of cases every month that are delayed like that. Because those, every one of those cases is somebody that's not eating. And, and they should have been able to tell you that today because they know the numbers. So that, they should have to release that also on a monthly basis so that the council has the ability to match up what you were all trying to do today, to match up the resources to the backlog. This is just a math problem. And I was also disappointed that they couldn't tell you how many staff they have and what their caseloads are. All of these are math problems that, you know, that are solvable. And if it was another kind of service that people cared more about, it would be solved. I mean, I'm sorry that I sound skeptical, but I just think, I just, I'm not going to stop thinking about your lifeguard example.
I, it's, you know, when I heard about this lifeguard shortage, I was like, this is the craziest thing ever. I never thought that I would still be talking about it in December. But it's just mind-blowing, you know, how quickly people, you know, were able to mobilize around that issue and get a resolution that worked. And, you know, I don't, I just, I don't, I don't get it. But I appreciate, you know, the recommendations. They're really good. And I also, I do want to add that they have been, I don't know that they've requested the waiver from the federal government, but I know that they have been in contact because I've been talking to my congressional rep as well, and, you know, I've been in communication with the state. So I know that there has been conversation. I just think that, I don't know that, I'm not comfortable saying that those conversations started early enough. You know, I think that we were in the midst of, you know, the crisis that was within the crisis when, when the requests were made. And I, and I think that, you know, we, they need to do better about, you know, being able to foresee, right? What's coming, especially because it hasn't gotten any better since, you know, 2020. So they should have been able to anticipate that it was gonna, it was gonna lead to this and that those waivers would expire and that they should have made the request before they allowed that to happen, not, you know, after, while, you know, application rates continue to climb. So we'll continue on our end.
Well, just one more thing I was going to say is, follow up on what you just said. They, they do, they have asked for other waivers. They've, they've gotten extensions to push some recertifications off. But the other thing that the council could do that I think would be helpful, also along the lines of more transparency, is why not make the, all the waiver information also publicly available? It should be easily available. Like, we actually have a standing foil where we get HRA policies and procedures, and actually, we end up posting them on a website that lots of people use, that we work with the Western New York Law Center. And if you go on that website, you'll see HRA policies and procedures are posted, and those are actually from the Legal Aid Society foil. Like, we post them because HRA doesn't. But HRA should post their policies and procedures and their waivers. You know, it would be so helpful for you to be able to know what they have and what they've asked for.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you to this entire panel. We are now going to shift to virtual testimony. The next three witnesses on the following panel will be Abby Beiberman, followed by Jamie Pavlovich, followed by Juan Diaz. And just a reminder that there may be a few seconds of a delay before you may begin. Please wait until the Sergeant-at-Arms lets you know that you may begin, and then you can begin your testimony. Over now to Abby Beiberman.
You may begin.
Deputy Speaker Ayala, councilmembers and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Abby Beiberman. I'm the Associate Director of the Public Benefits Unit at the New York Legal Assistance Group. NILAC's public assistance in SNAP practice represents clients having trouble accessing or maintaining these benefits. We represent our clients at administrative fair hearings and conduct advocacy with DSS, Benefits Access, and SNAP centers to bring impact and bring impact litigation to ensure that our clients are obtaining and maintaining benefits to which they're entitled. I don't have to tell you about the delays because the agency has already testified about being understaffed and unable to get to cases in time, but I'm going to. HRA is persistently delaying in processing applications for SNAP and benefits, and our clients are left without benefits to feed and care for their families. HRA is also failing to maintain the systems that enable these applicants and recipients to obtain and maintain benefits. The three major problems are failure to process the actual recertification and application forms, failure to conduct the interviews, and failure to index documents. First, they're failing to process the forms that our clients submit online, by fax, by mail, and in person. HRA testified about the unprecedented need, but HRA has a duty to these New Yorkers in need, and there are laws and regulations it must follow in serving these clients. We have had an unprecedented number of clients over the past year, or two years, three years, who have submitted their SNAP recertifications on time only to find out the following month that HRA has failed to process the paperwork and discontinue their benefits, often without notice. These clients must challenge the action at a fair hearing to have this reversed. They must reapply for benefits. And even if they're hearing immediately, they have no right to aid continuing under the regulations. So they are without benefits until they're able to have their recertification processed. As others have already said, people cannot eat retroactively. So even when HRA does get around to processing these recertifications, our clients are simply left with nothing while they wait. The other delays we're seeing have to do with one-shot deals. We work closely with our tenants' rights unit to help clients get arrears they need to help stay in their apartments. Clients report to us that they submit applications and never receive a decision from HRA. When NILAC intervenes, we're usually told that the application was never received by HRA's homelessness diversion unit or that there was some, some other problem that caused the delay, but it's not clear to us, and they're not transparent about where the breakdown occurs. We are often told the clients must reapply, even when they have proof that they've already completed application. Delay in processing these applications for benefits impedes clients' ability to apply for rental assistance programs to help pay arrears for ongoing rent. And for both these emergency assistance cases and rent subsidy cases, the clock is running in housing court, and our clients are at serious risk of eviction when HRA delays in processing these applications.
Time expired.
Okay, I just also want to please refer to my written testimony, but we do support the bills. We think that they could go a little bit further in, in improving the in-person experience for clients at centers, but you can refer to my written testimony for more. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Abby. Now over to Jamie.
Good afternoon. My name is Jamie Pavlovich, and I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Homeless Youth. CHY has advocated for the needs of runaway and homeless youth for almost 45 years and has a statewide membership, including 29 members here in New York City. Thank you to Deputy Speaker Ayala and the rest of the committee for holding today's hearing. CHY is in full support of the important pieces of legislation being heard today. I'll be submitting longer written testimony, but during my time today, I would like to focus on CityFEP's voucher access for youth experiencing homelessness in the DYCD-funded Runaway and Homeless Youth Programs, as well as youth transitioning out of ACS Care. In November 2021, council passed two groundbreaking pieces of legislation, Intros 2405A and 148B. In April of last year, local laws 170 and 157 went into effect, making youth experiencing homelessness in DYCD programs as well as youth transitioning out of ACS Care eligible for CityFEP's vouchers without having to first enter DHS shelters. For runaway and homeless youth specifically, this was celebrated as a significant victory by the council and the community since runaway and homeless youth have historically been left out of almost all other housing resources targeted to support individuals in exiting homelessness. Unfortunately, we have been informed that DSS, DHS is not moving forward with what we believe is required under the laws and that they are instead going to continue to force young people into DHS shelter systems before they can access vouchers, even if they are otherwise eligible, something that was already allowed for runaway and homeless youth through an MOU. Let me be clear, youth in the runaway and homeless youth system are homeless, period. And by the city requiring them to move from one shelter system to another to access a way out of homelessness is not only cruel, it makes no sense. At a time when the DHS shelter system is at an all-time high, why is the administration forcing young people into the DHS system unnecessarily? DSS's interpretation of the laws is not only a slap in the face for the youth programs and advocates that fought for these bills to be passed, but it is also another clear example of how New York City homelessness equals DHS. When in fact homelessness is a traumatic experience that far too many people endure in the city, and we believe resources should be based solely on that lived experience and not the system that you enter. Since the city initially promised youth experiencing homelessness in the DYCD system access to vouchers in 2016, 8,102 youth have been discharged from the youth shelter system into another homeless shelter situation that we know of. That is over 8,000 missed opportunities the city had to change the outcome for youth experiencing homelessness, and they failed. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jamie, for your testimony. Now going to turn to Juan Diaz.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker Ayala, for holding today's hearing. My name is Juan Diaz, and I am a Policy and Advocacy Associate at Citizens Committee for Children, a multi-issue children's advocacy organization dedicated, dedicated to ensuring that every New York child is healthy, housed, educated, and safe. The 2022 Annual Mayor Management Report showed that only 60% of SNAP applicants receive timely application and approval services. This is a huge drop-off because, considering that in 2021, 92% of applicants received services in a timely manner. Additionally, as we heard this morning, several city agencies have staff vacancies near 20%. These figures are concerning because staffing an HRA program is insufficient to meet the needs of low-income communities, considering that we are facing a 40-year high inflation rate. The recent announcement from the Mayor Office on PECs for the upcoming budget year raises concerns about the impact that staff reductions can have on public benefits applications. We urge the city to increase their efforts in ensuring that HRA and DHS staff vacancy rates are addressed immediately and that critically needed positions are not eliminated due to staff vacancies. A key strategy for improving timeliness on benefits access is to end the 90-day shelter stay rule that requires individuals to be in shelter for 90 days before they become eligible for CityFEPs. Eliminating this rule would allow more individuals and families in need to access vital housing vouchers. We urge you to continue your support for eliminating this illogical and costly administrative rule. Also, there's an urgent need to hire more bilingual personnel at HRA job centers to assist with households in desperate need of assistance. Homebase providers and clients have expressed concerns over the lack of Spanish-language assistance at HRA job centers. CCC also supports the legislation being heard on this hearing, and I will provide more details during my reading testimony. I do want to highlight the positive effect of Intro 0704 by Assembly, Councilmember Abreu. This bill will require the Human Reassurance Administration to provide landlords the option to accept rental assistance payments via electronic transfer into a bank account. Based on my own experience as a former supervisor of a homeless prevention program, landlords often complain about receiving rental assistance payments late, both in shelter and in the community. There's constant confusion over check distribution when housing subsidies are approved. The check disbursement process can be significantly improved by implementing a direct deposit system like the one proposed by Councilmember Abreu. As I mentioned before, many landlords often came to Homebase complaining about payments, and landlords are also open to these direct payments. So we urge the city to, you know, move ahead and pass this intro because far too many checks go missing, and it puts pressure not only on tenants, but also on caseworkers. Thank you for the chance to testify and for advocating for improving the public benefits processing system. Thank you.
Thank you to this entire panel for your testimony. We are now going to move to an in-person panel. The next panel will be the following individuals, Dr. Benjamin Zibbit, Tawaki Kamatsu, Camilla Newton, and Jason Frederick. All right, you may begin when ready, Dr. Benjamin Zibbit. And you can just make sure your mic is.
Can you hear me better now? Oh, yeah. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. So I am Benjamin Zibbit. I am a PhD, and I live in Councilwoman Tiffany Caban's District, District 22. So the first thing I'd like to say, and it's actually through her good offices that I have the chance to speak to you. However, I'd like to express my dismay over the fact that so few of the council members have stayed for our testimony. That's really a pity, including Councilwoman Caban. I think it's important to hear the people speak, not just officials of various organizations. So I don't have to emphasize the fact that we're living at a time when hunger is endemic in our city. I'm an older person. I'm 75. Every day, I struggle to find enough food to make it through the week. I visit two food pantries every week, usually two days a week, and a third every other week. I get enough canned food to make it through the week. I have a 16-year-old at home as well, so I have to provide for him. Because of the generosity of one of these food pantries, I had a Thanksgiving turkey, which was great, that my son and I could enjoy. But the reality is, I can't buy more than about $25 worth of fresh food every day at the supermarket. I didn't come here to complain. People who are elderly or poor are struggling every single day. They're working very hard to make ends meet. At the first food pantry that I go to, it's the Astoria Food Pantry. At the first food pantry that I go to, it's the Astoria Food Pantry on Steinway Street, I'd just like to mention, the manager of that pantry, her name is Katie, told me that she serves, or she gives out, four hundred bags of food every Monday. And she usually runs out by eleven AM. She used to give out eggs to everyone. I remember getting eggs when they were a dollar a dozen. Now they're four dollars and thirty cents at a minimum. Do I have any more time? Oh, thank you. And no more eggs are given away. So I applied for SNAP. And SNAP is a federal program administered on three different levels: the Department of Agriculture, New York State, and then HRA. That's a lot of different administrative levels. I put in more than three pages of documentation and data to support my application, every one of these pages with a case number. I had help from a really great caseworker at CID, though I'm not disabled, her name is Homira Salam, and we worked on this application for weeks. This was in March of this year. On September fifteenth, I heard back from HRA that my application had been denied because my income was too high. It's basically twice what the limit of, what is it, fourteen-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars a month can be. I'd like to know, first of all, I thought about that, and I said, "How can anyone manage on fourteen-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars a month in New York City?" Now, my rent is fifteen-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars a month. It would be impossible for a mother with two children to make it on this amount of money. I'm not even gonna mention, well, I guess I just did, the skimming of seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars of HRA funds, of SNAP funds, here in the city. But I do want to say the following: this city is no longer the same as the city, as New York was before the pandemic. We are fundamentally a different city now, very different. And the bureaucracy of the city has not kept up with the changes. So I have a few solutions: take it or leave it. We cannot count on Congress to help us, so we have to help ourselves. I would like to suggest that the City Council and the City Government set up an apparatus to distribute income, stimulus income, the way the federal government did at the start of the pandemic, on a regular basis. We need to levy higher income taxes on the rich. That's nothing new. And for people whose income is below seventy-thousand dollars a year, we need to make sure that they have a guaranteed monthly income. We don't need HRA. I'm gonna be frank, I don't want to put fourteen-thousand people out of their jobs, God forbid, but we don't need this third middleman to manage the money and the benefits that the elderly, the poor, and other people who are in need get. It could come directly from the federal government, through the IRS, or a supplemental program managed by the City Council and the City Government, okay? So I just want to say one other thing. I mean, I'm an historian. I studied history for several years. And I remember studying about the French Revolution. I don't mean to sound like a, you know, doom and gloom, but I studied history. And my take on this is that we are in a pre-seventeen-eighty-nine situation, right here in this city and in the United States. People are calling for bread. The government is saying, "Let them eat cake." It's not going to work. We all know what happened to Marie Antoinette. So we need to act positively to make sure that everybody has a guaranteed income before we face another seventeen-eighty-nine.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure that your mic is on, okay? Thank you.
I would say good morning, but I think we're at good afternoon. My name is Camilla Newton, and I'm in support of the bills that we're discussing today, all three of them. Before I begin, I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of myself and thousands of other constituents who are facing similar obstacles but could not be here to share their testimonies today. I'm a twenty-seven-year-old mother of two. This is my son beside me. And I've been dealing with housing instability for most of my life. My first stint of homelessness was attributed to childhood abuse that I fled once I had my son. And my second stint now is largely due to the fact that my beloved city has failed me. After being encouraged by HRA to report my former slumlord to three-one-one, I was retaliated against during eviction proceeding. I contacted virtually every city agency and local government entity to help me defend myself against the blatant lawlessness of my ex-landlord. I have attempted to utilize Homebase homelessness prevention services to no avail, leaving me and my now-two very small special-needs children without a home this winter. I'm currently a straight A, full-time Black Studies major with a concentration in pre-law, as this fight has inspired me to pursue this career path, particularly because of the lack of accountability plaguing the city agencies that should be assisting us the most. I entered the shelter system most recently at the end of September, having to put all my belongings in a storage that gladly accepts HRA payments. My belongings were on the verge of being auctioned off because the agency that committed to supporting me through this hardship took an unreasonably long time to process the paperwork. I called the HRA info line between work and school and was made to wait well over two hours every time. It was interesting that she said forty-five minutes. Two hours guaranteed every time. Many times hanging up before I could even speak to someone. Fortunately, my background is in activism, and I'm no stranger to advocating for myself and my community at large. Finally, on the verge of losing everything, I was able to reach the HRA Administrator, Ms. Fitzpatrick's office, just in time for her to be sure that my storage was paid in full as of this month. Through my own volition, and after having my voucher denied for four years, I've signed a lease for my pending apartment since early November. All my paperwork was completed by my dedicated and highly motivated housing specialist in record time. Parkchester Housing Management has also returned every requested document in less than forty-eight hours despite the redundancy of the requests. However, HRA has taken so long that they just this week requested a new lease dated for January first, because it's far too much time has passed for them to honor my December first moving date. It, sorry, it has been over a month since all the required information was submitted. My son is entitled to door-to-door busing due to his diagnoses, yet we are still trudging for hours from Queens to the Bronx on a daily basis in the dead of the winter. Not one resource given to me by DHS has assisted me in my housing search. All relevant paperwork has been turned over as quickly as humanly possible, and yet, no matter how efficiently every other part of the system moves, HRA will find a way to take so long that people lose their apartments regardless. No landlord wants to sign a lease and then not be paid for months at a time. And HRA moving at a snail's pace has only further exacerbated the stigma to be faced in regards to being voucher holders, and many times for the most ludicrous reasons. Thousands of people in this city either face homelessness or remain homeless because HRA doesn't operate efficiently enough for our vouchers to be comparable to cash. Unless we want our city to end up with its own Skid Row, voucher discrimination needs to be appropriately addressed as the crime that it literally is. But first, HRA and DHS need to be held accountable for the tangible repercussions to their actions, or lack thereof, that contribute to, for people already relying on them the most. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jason, and things have been hard ever since my mom and I were forced to move. The shelter is the worst place I've ever been to because there are lots of roaches and mice. I miss playing, I was my toys and my, and my four pets. Before the shelter, we always have to walk really far, get up really early, and ride a Q forty-four bus for a long time to make it to school. My mom is working hard to make sure me and my baby sister are safe, but seems like the people that are supposed to be helping aren't doing their jobs. I just turned nine last week on a Tuesday, and I'm looking forward to having my, my own room real soon. I hope that these new laws can fix that. Thank you.
You turned nine last week. Happy birthday. You're so smart for nine. I can't, sorry particularly, thank you so much for coming to testify today. I know sometimes it gets a little bit scary, and I'll talk to both mom and you to share our stories. And, but I think it's important that other people, because there are other people like you that are in similar situations and don't know how to use their voice, or don't know where to go to use their voice, are gonna probably be helped because you're sharing your story today. And I'd like to offer my assistance if I can in helping you process the necessary documentation as quickly as possible to get you and your family into, into that housing as soon as we can. So if you want to share that with us before we leave. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Tawaki Komatsu. I've testified to you repeatedly. Lincoln Wrestler, he praised HRA prior to boycotting our testimony today. In contrast to what he said about HRA, HRA is total garbage. Anne Marie Scalia, she's the General Counsel of HRA. She was here while the people who sat at this table lied straight to your face under oath. You're the Chairwoman of this committee. With regards to instances of people lying under oath, what exactly are you going to do about that, and when? I've told you before that I've been trying to get access to public contracts, draft versions of public contracts, prior to public hearings that HRA conducts. There's another one on December twentieth. They still won't let me at their headquarters to see that contract prior to the public hearing. In flagrant violation of my First and Fourteenth Amendment rights, you're the Chairwoman of this committee. I'm looking straight at you. I've asked for your assistance previously. I've sent you emails. Never once got any assistance whatsoever. I have litigation against Urban Pathways. It's a business partner, well, it's an ally of Mayor Adams. A lawyer for Legal Aid Society basically told the judge during the hearing, "Sorry, but this isn't the type of case that we take." Problem: people have a legal right to pro bono legal representation. Legal aid can't make a determination saying, "Sorry, but this isn't the type of case. It's only if you have, like, a lack of lawyers to take the case." I've apprised HRA of that, haven't gotten any assistance. The people here today from HRA, they talked about jobs recruiting. They lied straight to your face. I think I told you previously I applied to HRA more than twenty times. That's how many interviews I got. Total number of jobs that I'm fully qualified for? All of them. So there's a clear discrepancy. Them telling you, lying straight to your face, you know, "We're trying to fill these holes in our, you know, staff, our workforce." I talked to Mayor Adams in June of this year. He basically confirmed, you know, if you have litigation against HRA, you can basically expect to be blacklisted, illegally blacklisted in retaliation. Can't do that. That's a flagrant violation of applicable law. I currently have active federal litigation against Ms. Scalia, HRA personnel, case is Komatsu versus City of New York, case number twenty-two CV nine-zero-eight-zero. Chief Judge Laura Taylor Swin, she authorized me to pursue that litigation in the last three weeks. After today's hearing, I'm gonna be going straight after HRA and its personnel, as well as the people that won't intervene on my behalf in regards to my complaints. Ms. Ayala, you're going to be busy. I also have early Christmas gifts for the U.S. Supreme Court. Two in fact. Here's a petition for writ of certiorari being mailed today. Here's a petition for rehearing being mailed today. Basically, Stephen Banks illegally caused me to be black, prevented from attending public town hall meetings in twenty-seventeen, as early as April twenty-seventeen. I have the emails confirming that. Basically, I had a conversation with him on, what, April eleventh, twenty-seventeen? I had an oral arguments hearing and litigation the following day. They stole my oral arguments hearing from me by doing ex parte communications with the judge. Can't do that. You're an attorney. You know that. Last question is this. You know that I come here sometimes to advocate for other people. Somebody in the apartment directly beneath mine, in my building, he had black mold. The landlord shut off the water for the whole building without prior notice to me, so I had to use the restroom. Guess what? No water service. What do you do? So Urban Pathways, they keep getting more contracts, more cash. It's coming from your paychecks. So why is, why are they getting more money from your paychecks when they're not performing their legal duties and HRA is basically paying a blind eye about that? And, oh, sorry, one thing. The guy who was sitting in this chair before me, he talked about OTDA fair hearings. OTDA fair hearings. HRA won't comply with its legal duty to provide me discovery material prior to those fair hearings. OTDA is not providing me sufficient notice prior to those fair hearings to submit the request to HRA to give me the discovery material. So I understand that you have oversight of city agencies, but do you have any, I guess, connections with the Assembly, Senate members to cause OTDA to have proper oversight to be administered to them? I mean, the current Commissioner of OTDA, he's from HRA. What can you do about that?
Well, as I've shared with you before, I don't comment on individual cases that are being litigated. A lot of, a lot of what unfortunately occurred to you predates me, and I know that there's pending action that you're pursuing, which you have every right to. But I cannot comment on, you know...
Sure. But the common denominator is just like she was talking about.
I understand.
It's a shared issue, and there's no oversight by people like you.
I understand. I mean, there is oversight. I mean, this is why we're here. This is exactly why we're here.
Where is everyone?
Well, I'm here. I'm here.
You're really not.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone on this panel for your testimony. We're now going to move back to virtual testimony. In the following order, the next panel will be Adriana Mendoza, followed by Sarah Wilson, followed by Ethel Brown. Over now to Adriana Mendoza.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Ayala and members of the General Welfare Committee for holding this hearing and for the opportunity to testify today. I'm likely to go a little bit over in our testimony, and I hope Chair Ayala will excuse us for a moment or two. My name is Adriana Mendoza. I'm a benefit supervisor at the Safety Net Project at the Urban Justice Center, SMP. We're extremely disturbed to hear that only forty-four percent of SNAP applications are processed on time, and only sixty-one percent of cash assistance applications are processed on time. This is completely unacceptable and in clear violation of federal and state law. At SMP, we assist over one thousand households each year in resolving their public benefits issues. As such, we have been receiving a flood of cases this year where households have submitted their application well over the thirty-day mark and have yet to receive a determination or benefits. Other families have submitted their recertifications and still get their benefits cut off. Some families we meet are waiting two, three, four, even six months to get their benefits. One of our clients, Mrs. H, applied for cash assistance in SNAP on October fourth. Ms. H lives alone in Brooklyn and is struggling to pay her rent each month. She had no income at all, so she should have received emergency cash and SNAP benefits. On the day that she applied for cash and five days later for SNAP. However, HRA did not issue any benefits until almost four weeks later on October twenty-eighth. While she waited for benefits, she went to her center and was told that if she needed emergency benefits, she should apply again and request them. Soon after, Mrs. H reached out to us and we were able to advocate for her case to finally be activated as of this week, December twelfth, over two months after she initially applied. And these issues also extend to CityFEPs as well, which the city has delegated to Homebase without ensuring that Homebase is able to process applications for eligible families. People who need CityFEPs in order to avoid eviction tell us that they spend months trying to reach Homebase and leaving messages only to never hear back, or to be told that there are no appointments available for many more months. Others aren't able to reach CityFEPs for research. Mr. C was approved for CityFEP's subsidy in October twenty-nineteen. He's fifty-eight years old, permanently disabled, and lives in Brooklyn with his disabled adult nephew. He had opened heart surgery in January twenty-twenty and was discharged from the hospital on January fourteenth, twenty-twenty. That same day, he arrived home to an appointment notice for cash assistance recertification, and he immediately went to the center to complete his recertification. Some center workers even asked why he was there on the day that he had been discharged from the hospital. And yet, Mr. C... And yet, Mr. C proceeded to complete his PA, his cash assistance recertification, but was never informed by anyone at the center that he also had to recertify for city fabs. He went back to the HRA center repeatedly to try and fix his city fabs, but was told by workers again and again that they couldn't help or that they couldn't see the city fabs on his case. As a result, Mr. C's city city fabs subsidy was discontinued and he accumulated over. Do I have more time?
Go ahead.
Thank you, and he accumulated over two years of parental years. And these stories unfortunately aren't uncommon, uh but the norm. Uh and so we have a few recommendations, so one, that HRA immediately redeploy staff from other areas to benefits uh processing units. Staffing for SNAP program is over one, is about one thousand one hundred and twelve, while uh for investigations and fraud is seven hundred and eleven, which is a hugely inflated number. Two, that HRA implement emergency hiring procedures, including hiring public assistance recipients who are interested in positions at HRA. Um and three, that HRA stop all benefits cutoffs and extend all recertifications and six-month mailers. Thank you for your time and I look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Thank you, Adriana, for your testimony, now going to turn over to Sarah Wilson.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wilson, good afternoon, everyone. I'm very happy to be here, so for identification purposes, I'm formerly homeless, disabled, dual diagnosed, mental health and substance abuse. And I just wanna say that my stability and ability of function is directly impacted by my housing, my food, my sleep and any undue stress and despair that I'm going through, um as well as other people with the same diagnoses. With that said, I agree with both HRA and city fabs need for revisions, specifically preventative services. Right now, Homebase is handling all of the preventative services for people in community. However, they are not able to meet that need. In the revision of HRA, it would be most, most, most crucial to implement onsite a housing person. Right now, that's not being done, also, I've heard mention community-based orgs. There are community-based orgs that do SNAP applications in support of housing applications, surely there's a way we can extend them to also be able to meet the need of the preventative. For example, there's someone I'm working with in community who in August had an immediate need. It took one month for a phone call, one month for an appointment and two months for a caseworker, that's four months later. And the only reason she got a caseworker is because I reached out and intervened. She now still has not gotten her paperwork, which she put in in August to be eligible for a voucher. She's extended her opportunities and says, well, what if I finally have to take my three sons into shelter and my heart speaks to the young boy that spoke and I am so proud of him as a mother, it just, it it warms my heart. This same mother did not wanna put her ten-year-old in shelter, so I get it. At that point, I then had to point out to her that if she did go in, then she would have to wait three more months, which would be a seven-month period, and I just wanna speak from a mental health perspective. Six months is the defining criteria between an adjustment disorder and PTSD, so when we're holding people this long, we're ensuring that they get PTSD. In regards to hiring, um I'll be able to complete my bachelor's in psychology next semester, well, I'll graduate next semester. And I looked up what I can do with that in New York. For forty thousand dollars, I can be a shelter director, but for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I can be a psych technician if I take a online accreditation for two hundred questions open book. For me to choose a forty thousand dollar career versus a hundred and twenty thousand dollar career, there would have to be something fundamentally wrong with me to pick the la- um the letter lesser one. So my suggestion would be in your hiring process to allow there to be one senior person onsite that is able to meet the credentials that comes with their education. On top of that, um sorry, the prison population, I have an ex that was sent home with a benefit card, but it was not activated. If you know you're being discharged and you know you're getting a benefit card, why not activate it instead of making them wait forty-five days where a person could fall back into recidivism. Also too, when we're reaching out to the, make sure the landlords get paid, we have to put an emphasis on the brokers. We have brokers that are acting as case managers, um fighting for these clients and then at the end not getting paid. When the key is exchanged, there should be some sort of an electronic.
Time expired.
Um action, okay, I'm gonna stop in a second, electronic action that gets the landlord and the broker paid because brokers are having to turn away clients. It should not have to be fundamentally that everyone takes a loss to work with homeless and unhoused persons. That's been the status quo and that needs to change from everything from staffing to um these measures and I'll set up there, thank you so much and God bless.
Thank you, Sarah, for your testimony. Now over to Ethel Brown for testimony.
Good afternoon, uh my name is Ethel Brown and I thank you, Chair and Councilmembers, for the opportunity to testify today. All that I've heard, it really breaks my heart to hear all of this, it's wrong. I uh am sounding like this because there was no heat. The boiler broke and we said it was the water, that there's no water there, so that's how I got sick. Plus having high blood pressure, it's not a good thing. I'm a mother, a grandmother. I have a city fabs voucher holder and a leader at neighbors together. If it wasn't for neighbors together or safety net, I don't know what would happen right now. We found an apartment in May and we couldn't say or do anything regarding the apartment because there were also certain things that had to be done. Because those things had to be done, it held us up. I am here to also express my support for intro seven oh three and seven oh four with Sean Abreu and the other people who are connected to it. I have firsthand experience with HRA not paying my rent on time. My family and I just moved to our apartment with city fabs voucher in late August of this year. After more than seven years, there's a woman that has been homeless for over twenty-nine years, she was on NPR. Of searching for a place for our own, our voucher and months of delay, the moving process. This month, my landlord asked if the voucher buddy would come to him on time and we told him yes, because that's what we expected. Now, our yes became a no because HRA did not send the funds in time for our December rent payment. Now, that is another thing, they did not even show up to the New York State Assembly. This is hurting our credibility with our landlord agreement, it was just of us and the voucher program. And for us, it's just another experience of the voucher not working the way it should. Making promises that fail. My daughter reached out to HRA for assistance to try to figure out what happened with the rent and was told to call Homebase. Homebase told her that they couldn't help her and that she wouldn't be able to get an appointment until June. What audacity. So we're left on our own, as usual, trying to figure it out before our landlord gives us a thirty-day notice. Passing intro seven oh four would make a big difference on behalf of voucher holders like myself and to the landlords because they'll be getting more money on time. If my family and I knew that checks were being deposited automatically at our time, I, it would make us feel more secure. More landlords would accept vouchers because it would be like getting your paycheck.
Time expired.
Because, hello? It's right there, you don't have to wait for a timely electronic payment with improved landlord's impression of agencies because it would move the system more s- uh from something archaic to something modern and up to date. What important suggestion to improve into seven oh four would be that tenants' vouchers need a way to approve payment or not approve payment as a way to hold landlords accountable for bad conditions. For example, if there was no heat or hot water, the tenant would be able to tell HRA to hold payment until the conditions are fixed and then once they're fixed, the tenant could approve payment and the check could be released into the landlord's back house. I strongly urge the council to pass these two bills to keep voucher holders housed and out of homelessness. It's very, very important not to be out on the streets or anywhere, we need a place to stay. The other thing is that the Metro cards, a lot of people are eligible, but they go by your gross income. That makes no sense. The SNAP benefits that need to be looked into because once you start working and you make a little bit more, it goes down. And also, uh I thank you. By the way, today I just heard from the Real Deal magazine that the e-rap is gone come January, so people who are in need of it won't be getting any help. Thank you for your time and attention, I really appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethel, for your testimony and thank you, everyone on this panel for your testimony. At this time, we're gonna call on Milton Perez in for in-person testimony.
We good, you hear me? Greetings, thank you, Ethel, that's a friend of mine, she let me know uh about this, what's going on today. Uh general welfare meeting, my name is Milton Perez from the Bronx, Puerto Rico. I'm a member of Vocal New York's, member leader Vocal New York's Homelessness Union, which is H U, but also Vocal AU, all union are support and I'm an ally of all the unions in Vocal New York. I spent over five years in the shelter system. I would say I stopped counting at five years. So some of the issues that are being addressed today as far as these bills, uh you know, is something that I've dealt with throughout the years. The expediter would be somebody, a professional, which uh usually, do a job usually is done by security guards at HRA, which I'm thankful for them doing case work, but it it would be good to have an expediter uh in uh in in these spaces uh to uh address the 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 public while they're seeking help, that's one. Uh as far as uh HRA overall, a lot of people are very thankful for the help uh that is was given, but it's 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 things are made so difficult to access all these services. Um and some of us, you know, they might not need as much help as others. See how people are treated and you know, and and a lot of times, you know, because of the difficulties, uh people, you know, kind of tune out and and don't seek the help that they need, whether it could be a lady that's dealing with domestic violence and how she's treated in in uh in HRA, you know, might, you know, push her away from seeking the help that she actually needs for herself and her children. Being in the shelter all these, all these years, uh and finally getting out last year, uh through uh getting lucky, getting a city fabs voucher, uh very thankful. But I've been trying to renew the city fabs voucher since May. I thought I did, I did, I did, I thought I did the right thing. Uh and uh just an example, you know, you go to, you go to HRA uh to submit documents, you you should get a letter saying that you were there, get a separate letter saying uh that they received the documents and maybe a separate letter uh letting you know what documents you submitted. I get no information from city fabs, it took them two months to respond to me. So I got a letter in May saying that they never received the documents and that they wanna uh close my case or, you know, worse of that nature, if I didn't respond by September. I resubmitted everything, um got no uh uh no more uh response, no immediate response till uh the end of August, you know, near September, saying that they uh uh that they uh uh reached out to me or 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 something that I never received. When I looked at Access HRA, which is technically city fabs is not part of, for whatever reason, even though it's city fabs part of HRA, uh one more minute if I could. When you submit stuff to Access HRA, it goes through the document section. When you receive something from uh from uh HRA, uh it it goes to a different section. I forget, uh one is submitted documents, uploads. So the 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 stuff that I submitted was uh in in the in the area on on the website, on on the app that is coming from HRA, so, or notices, it was in the notices section. The paperwork that I submitted to HRA for city fabs was in the notices section. And that's all I received, I never received any other paperwork. So I called the numbers that were provided for me, very difficult to take hours to 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 get in contact. And uh emailed, it was acknowledged that they received the paperwork, but it's been two months already and nowhere from uh city fabs, so it's been what, four or five months uh in just in the renewal process of city fabs. As far as renewing my lease, it took a a week. So I, there's a discrepancy of what people want done and what is actually done. So some of us who have some weather though of how to do things, know how to go to to HRA building and uh, you know, and it's acknowledged that there are issues. Uh for example, I know a friend of mine who went to HRA, uh told him their problem, the person acknowledged, you know, it'll be resolved. The case was still closed. So we're very thankful for the help that is provided, you know, but HRA needs to do better in how they do things. So I support these three bills, uh the electronic payments, anything to make the, bring things to, you know, to 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 the this new century, the things would be much better than they're being done at the moment. Thank you so much, uh city council for for your oversight. Every time when I saw oversight, or I I gotta go to this meeting because it's 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 necessary. Uh it's it's necessary, so thank you for 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 your help and uh and the oversight that uh you're providing in these issues, thank you.
Thank you, Milton, and I think we're, we should be, we're gonna, we're hoping to have a hearing, an oversight hearing on the on the voucher program um soon, so um be mindful of that on the calendar. I just wanna thank, you know, thank you for for coming and sharing and again, you know, um if you need any help in 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 getting your application um completed, uh we're happy to help with that. Uh but for any New Yorker that's watching, I think that the message stays, you know, I mean, what we've heard today is pretty alarming um in regards to the uh the number of applications that are still, you know, sitting around waiting to be processed. Uh obviously, the city is facing, you know, several challenges and staffing is one of those, but you should not feel like um there is no, no recourse. If you are an individual that is applying for benefits and you haven't heard back or are continuing to get denied, um please, I urge you to contact your city council member. We are, we have a constituent services team at every office that is equipped with helping um remedy a lot of those those situations and that that is what we do, so please uh make use of that resource. Um and and thank you to all of the advocates again and 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 the team for um all of the work that went into today's presentations and um I think we've learned a lot and I think that we we have a lot of work uh to continue to do.
So at this point, we've heard from everyone who has signed up to testify and if we inadvertently missed anybody who would like to testify in person, you can visit the sergeant and sergeants-at-arm table now and complete a witness slip. Now, if we inadvertently missed anyone who signed up to testify and would like to testify virtually, please use the Zoom raise hand function right now in Zoom and I'll call on you in the order of hand raised. I know that Ethel Brown and Sarah Wilson both have their hands raised in Zoom. Both have testified already, but deferring to the chair, the chair is all right with you all speaking at this point, so over to Ethel Brown.
I thank you so much, I really appreciate it. What happened is I also forgot to say that we have things in storage because we took out things from storage, brought it to the place, but while we were there, certain things, as I said before, were supposed to be handled and wasn't complete because we asked in advance if everything was fine, but it wasn't. So the things that we also had, we had to put back in storage. Now, um it's going to the situation of auctioning because we didn't get to pay the building time and plus it also caused us uh uh there's a situation where the uh person who's employed, their salary was decreased half and just had a child and this is bad because now everything is backing up. You know, you're paying, you're taking for Peter to pay Paul and it shouldn't be that way. So those are the things that I just wanted to say because we have things there that we don't wanna lose. We don't even have coats or boots and we contacted different places. And uh everything is, you have to sign up before and things like that. So that was it, that was it, and I had to say and I thank you again.
Thank you, Ethel. Now over to Sarah Wilson.
Thank you so much. I will keep this so brief. The one thing I forgot to say was, as far as staffing, if you guys could really consider creating a part-time position for people like myself on disability or seniors that are only allowed to work a certain amount of minimal hours, I really think that would help engaging people to rejoin the workforce and also help with burnout. And I think it would be pooling a resource of people that are currently ineligible. And I'm done. Thank you so much, and God bless everybody.
Thank you.
And finally, Juan Diaz.
Yes, thank you. Just want to, you know, Councilmember Ayala mentioned community colleges. But I also encourage HRA and city agencies to look for freshmen, you know, seniors out of college, at Hunter College, Barug City College. I'm a Hunter alum, and I can see a lot of advocates looking forward to work for city agencies. So college campuses, you know, work with colleges advisors to have fairs. And I'm pretty sure they will, they will receive many applications from talented young advocates.
Thank you. Really good feedback.
At this point, seeing no one else with their hands raised on Zoom or anyone who has signed up in person, I just want to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Deputy Speaker Ayala, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing, and I will turn it back over to you.
With that, this hearing is adjourned.